Twenty minutes for public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have six. Our first two speakers, Jan Zuckerman and Karen Shea.
Great. If they will come up and make their way to the speakers podium. I'm going to read the instructions for public comment, just so you have a understanding of what to expect. Our responsibilities as board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but we will follow up on various issues that are raised. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect, consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you get to one minute left, a yellow light will appear, and then when your time is up, the red light will come on and a small buzzer will beep. If at that time you could wrap up your comments, that would be greatly appreciated. So with that, we sincerely appreciate your input and we thank you for your cooperation. Go ahead.
Before we start, Karen and I have something that we wrote that we're going to share over those three and three minutes, and at the very end Jamal Landers, who's an alumni, is going to add on his 30 seconds, which combined will be six minutes, three and three.
Okay. That's great. So between the three of you, you have two cycles, or can we start at three minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we introduce ourselves?
Yes. Please start by stating your name, spelling your last name.
Okay. My name is Jan Zuckerman, Z-U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N, and I'm a teacher at Sunnyside Environmental School. We represent a united staff from Sunnyside Environmental School, one committed to racial equity and closing the opportunity gap for all students in Portland public schools. We're humbly and genuinely asking for the board's help in partnership to jointly examine our current enrollment and transfer practices, ask tough questions about our own institutionalized racism, and quickly make important changes together. Before we begin, it's important that the board, the superintendent, and the greater community know that we love our Sunnyside students and families, and our intention is to improve our school district as a whole, not to pick groups of people against each other. We are a vibrant community, one that values students, staff, parent, and community members, all having a stake in the education of children. This is a difficult situation for everyone, and we must all experience collective discomfort in order to move forward. We are a special focus school, but for almost a decade, we've had a neighborhood catchment, one that has grown so big that for the first time in our 20-year history, we have no transfer slots available to any Portland students except siblings of our current students. We believe our current policy dilemma to be in direct violation of the district's equity policy. To frame our story tonight, we've outlined our biggest challenges using some of the tenants of critical race theory. To understand how we've arrived in this place of zero slots for non-neighborhood kids, it's important that we provide the board with a counter-story of our enrollment data. If the board were to look at the data, at first glance, it appears that we're relatively balanced with almost equal numbers of students who reside in and out of our catchment area. The data is incredibly misleading. PPS policy allows a family to stay at a school until the highest grade even if they move homes. While this policy is an important one for many families, especially those without permanent housing, we see it as one that is easily abused by people who possess privilege. In Portland, countless numbers of families shop for schools. At Sunnyside, this plays out in a couple of repeating scenarios. Everything from families with means actually moving to our neighborhood to falsifying addresses to access our school. In all cases, parents are well-intentioned and simply looking for a great education for their child, but the majority of these families are white and possess white privilege. Please recognize that these well-intentioned, privileged families show in our data as transfer families because their current addresses lie outside of the catchment. And as environmental educators, we hold a collective belief that environmental justice is social justice. Whiteness is property in the form of intellectual currency when it comes to teaching our students how to interact with the environment in a personal way within our city and our global world. We have seen this whiteness as property go hand-in-hand with the permanence of racism at Sunnyside. There are many culturally sanctioned beliefs around environmental education and people of color, most of them perpetuated by the dominant culture unconsciously or subconsciously used to maintain the dominant culture's power of school choice. The truth is that black and brown people are environmental scientists, farmers, engineers, foragers, botanists, naturalists, environmental social activists here in Portland and all over the globe. Is this the story we tell in Portland? We have been told many times over the years, publicly and privately and professionally, that black and brown families are not the ones who are applying to us in the lottery in the first place, implying both that we are a school that draws in white people and that environmental education is for the white majority. In addition, varying PPS employees have commented on our pedagogy not being the best fit for all students. Pedagogy that focuses on place-based, relevant experiences and creating a classroom community of learners above all else. After three years of deep, committed equity work, we now recognize these perpetuated false beliefs that simply have been the permanence of institutionalized systemic racism showing up over the years. Until now, they have gone relatively unchecked, and we are here today as white allies to interrupt that practice. Interest convergence and the critique of liberalism have plagued our school history as well. We have come before many different school boards over the years to present this very problem we are outlining right now. The only difference being that we did not have courageous conversation, common language, and the PPS equity policy at those times. We have discussed possible small incremental changes and even talked of opening a replica in a different, more diverse part of town, once we were able to get grant funding or have time to devote to difficult politics. These changes don't address the bigger issue, and it is important that we're honest with ourselves. Small changes and our changes that can be postponed because of messy politics do not fix the problem. They do not send the message that we value equal opportunities for black, brown, and white students alike. They actually epitomize the critique of liberalism. The small changes show that we are aware of the problem, but the solutions we pose simply maintain the status quo, keeping the dominant group in power with access. Our collective equity work requires that people of all races talk with each other about race and the impact of whiteness in all of us. That said, we are allowing our district to become more and more segregated, in some cases making it nearly impossible for our youth to begin these conversations with each other. Our school mission has always been the same, to bring students from all of Portland's neighborhoods together in an effort to address the larger, local, and global issues of racism, classism, and environmental social justice. We create future leaders and activists, and limiting access to our unique program sends a message that only certain students are cut out to be our future leaders for environmental justice.
We are a school who has implemented the equity work with great fidelity. We're interrupting our own whiteness and changing our curriculum and school practices. We infuse counter-story in multiple perspectives. We have begun apparent courageous conversations groups so that all of our community can speak the same language around racial equity. We are committed to making drastic changes in order to make sure that true equity of access exists for all. We understand the concept of interest convergence, and we understand that the dominant group will need to lose something for things, some things, in order for equity to truly be achieved. That's fine by us. We are ready to start tonight. At this time, we are asking the board to make a decision to publicly, officially close our school as we know it, declare us to be the neighborhood school that we truly are, and publicly state that our lottery no longer exists. Portland does not have a school choice for environmental science. We are fooling the city and our community if we continue to tell the story to the public. Once our school is named the neighborhood school that it is, our truth will be spoken to the city at large, and we hope to begin to work together on a different path for environmental education in Portland public schools.
My last name is Landers, L-A-N-D-E-R-S. To put a point on what they're saying, I'm a product of SES. In my formative years, I was allowed an opportunity to experience friendships and appreciation for the outdoors. This planted a seed of curiosity about the world and allowed me to travel in it with confidence. After returning from teaching English in Taiwan, starting my own Portland-based business and working for Portland Public Schools, I find myself here telling you that under the current circumstances, a child like myself would have no place in EMS unless opportunity that would close off several more possibilities. This can no longer be the case. Child first, or children first, not parents, not loopholes or bureaucracy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we normally do not respond, but that was really powerful, and I want to thank you for coming and sharing that and being willing to have a real conversation about it. Thank you.
Next, we have Rob Johns and Greg Burrow.
Would you like to go first?
Oh, you may.
Okay. My name is Rob Johns, J-O-H-N-S. I am here before the Portland Public School Board as I was last month to bring to bear the issue of raising the cap on the enrollment for Benson Tech. There's been substantial press. I think I've garnered support among industry and labor leaders as well. I think the issue of jobs for kids is real. I think job readiness is a real issue, and our children are delayed for the lack of it in our schools. So to that, I would ask consideration for that at the level of the board, and if that were not the case, if allocation would even be made for those kids that did not get in the last lottery, who were legacy kids. They had family members, grandparents, uncles, aunts, and the extended family who were members who graduated from the school. At the most recent school cleanup, I ran into a number of kids whose grandparents or uncles attended. So when you ask them what they do and what they major in, it all connects pretty clearly. In addition, I would ask that the school board and the public schools in Portland recognize that with the potential for SB 498, Career and Technical Education Revitalization Grant Program, that this is an outstanding opportunity for us to capitalize on a real need, and that Benson would be recognized as the school to do that. And to that, I would add that there are a number of alumni who are teachers, who are in that range where they cannot continue in perpetuity to teach. We need to create a perpetuity of planning for teachers behind the existing ones, reaching out to labor unions and industry together, and to do that, and I ask for the support at the Portland Public Schools to recognize openly Benson in a means to write a grant on a timely basis in conjunction with whatever resources we can muster within the alumni and our Benson Tech Foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Burrow, B-U-R-R-I-L-L, and I'm here for the fourth time as an education stakeholder. I thought I was finished last time, but here I am again. Today, it's important to remind you that I speak today only as an individual. First, I want to thank you, Superintendent Smith, for coming to a recent PAT meeting and giving each teacher, counselor, and psychologist your attention as we told you what we need to do our jobs effectively. In short, we asked for more time and resources, a lot like you. I recently noticed, however, that you still plan to appeal the arbitrator's ruling that Nick's teaching six of eight periods and limited students to seven classes each. Now, there are lots of numbers coming up, so pay attention. If you have 180 students, 10 minutes grading per student is 30 hours of the 37 and a half hours I'm paid to work, but I also teach over 20 hours, plan lessons, contact parents, attend meetings. And remember, I'm using 10 minutes as a round figure. I want you to think about a five-page paper on the New Deal. You got that? At 200 words per minute, that's five minutes, a reasonable estimate for the careful reading necessary as long as the paper is well-written. But how long does it take to read and correct mechanical errors, especially if the handwriting is poor? The second time I read it, it's for organization of content. Does it have a clearly stated thesis? Does each topic sentence contribute to a well-structured argument? Is there adequate evidence for each point cited? Is the evidence properly cited? The third time I read it, I make comments about writing style and frame my comments as encouragement, not criticism. How much longer than 10 minutes you imagine that takes? I heard, however, that PAT recently received a contract offer that hopes to reduce teacher planning time. At this point, I have two great hopes. The first is that we all, all the work done by PAT to streamline language for our upcoming contract talks have made you realize that we put a lot of work in and thought into what is vital for the education of the whole child. My second hope is that you will look at the last best offer made by the Park Rose School District, the Reynolds School District, and the Gresham Barlow School District, and then look at the contracts that were signed after a five-day strike against Reynolds, a one-day strike against Gresham Barlow, and the threat of a strike against Park Rose. Over the past four decades, teachers have limited pay raises to preserve health and retirement benefits, preserve the educational environment for their precious students. Honestly, how much more do you think we're able to give up? Last page. We know that any reduction in time and resources is too much for our kids to bear, and so is any increase in workload. So I hope you realize that what must now give is the amount of resources available to public education, and I hope you'll help me fight for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Eliza Erhardt Eisen and Jenny Pullen.
Just wait for a light.
Nope, you just start, and the light will follow you.
My name's Eliza Erhardt Eisen, E-R-H-A-R-D-T hyphen E-I-S-E-N, and I'm a former Portland Public School parent, a longtime Portland Public School volunteer, and I'm still volunteering in our high schools. I've been a longtime advocate. I've organized bus rallies down to Salem for school funding for years and years and years. And though I know the district is making incremental improvements in student achievement, the pace is not fast enough for this generation of kids. Way too many of our kids are not ready for work or college. Our high school grad rates are unacceptable, our achievement gap is too wide, and our kids' ACT scores are alarming, with only 58% of our kids college proficient in reading and only 42% in math. Funding is clearly inadequate. We all know that. Our class sizes are too big. Teachers have an excessive load of students to teach, as we just heard. Teachers don't have the infrastructure needed to teach our kids the technological skills they need to be productive citizens. And though I and others will continue to fight for better and stable funding, I know funding alone won't raise achievement for every kid in our system. So as a vested stakeholder in Portland Public Schools, and I think all citizens of Portland are vested stakeholders, I'm asking the district and the teachers' union to be held more accountable to serve our kids better. And I have two specific asks that I think will elevate instruction and raise achievement for every kid in our city schools. One is to hire earlier, by early April, and ideally one round for internal and external candidates. PPS hires much later than our surrounding districts, so many gifted educators are no longer available to hire by the time we do it. Late hiring especially impacts math, advanced science, and other fields where the qualified pool of educators is already small. I mean, I think our math ACT scores are reflective of that pool of what's out there right now. We need to get in there earlier. The second ask is to make training and experience as important as seniority for teacher and principal assignments. I have many examples of programs that have been decimated, like the High School Coral Programs a couple of years ago, by facilitated placements and cohorts of students who have been short-changed due to facilitated placements that did not account for training and expertise needed for the assignment. And I'm happy to supply you with more examples if you want. All Portland citizens have a vested interest in the educational outcomes of our kids as their preparedness will inform the economic vitality and health of our city. As citizens, we're happy to pull up our sleeves and help with funding and volunteerism, but we need you to be responsible with staffing to serve our kids and our city better. Thanks a lot for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Pullen, P-U-L-L-E-N. I'm a crime prevention coordinator with the City of Portland. I work for the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and I partner with the Police Bureau on a daily basis to do my job. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask parents to please clean out their medicine cabinets and take advantage of the prescription drug disposal programs that we have available in the City of Portland. Since 2009, we've been hosting disposal that's free. It's safe for the environment, and it keeps our waterways clean and gives us a chance to raise awareness about prescription drug abuse among teenagers. And I'd like to just share some information about the program so that parents have that information. Our program is focused on two different areas. One is one-day drug turn-in events, which we have one coming up on Saturday, April 27th, from 10 to 2:00, and that's a partnership with the DEA. It's a nationwide drug turn-in, and that's going to be at Southeast Precinct. But we also have permanent disposal boxes available in all four of our precincts in the city, and I'm realizing that I need to reach out more to parents because they're the ones that can make the biggest difference. Cleaning out your medicine cabinet could potentially prevent addiction, overdose, and even death among teenagers. Teenagers are experimenting with prescription medications, sometimes because they think it's safe to do so. Prescriptions are prescribed by a doctor, so, you know, it's probably a better choice than other drugs. And we're finding that there is a recklessness in this behavior. So we really want parents to take that first step to eliminate unused or expired medications. Oftentimes, we'll hang on to a pain reliever because we didn't use all of it, and medications can be expensive, so we'll keep it. And unfortunately, those drugs aren't safe for us either. You know, they do expire, and they do lose potency, so it's best to follow the directions on there and dispose of them. Safe disposal means that we're going to incinerate the medication through a filtered process, which is how the Police Bureau gets rid of evidence, and it doesn't go into our waterway. And we encourage you to come out and dispose of your medication on Saturday. If you can't make it on Saturday, please take advantage of our boxes, which are in our precincts, available during lobby hours. So pretty much every day of the week, you can find a box that is available for you to use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes our public testimony. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Portland Children's Levy, which was created by city voters in 2002 and overwhelmingly renewed in fall of 2008 for an additional five years. Another five-year levy renewal will be going before voters next month. I'd like to welcome Multnomah County Commissioner Deborah Cifuri, who will provide a few words, but first start with Director Knowles to introduce the item.
So as Chair Delisle said, the Children's Levy is created in 2002, overwhelmingly renewed in 2008, and now is on the ballot in 2013. I'll talk loud. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this resolution, supporting the levy because it provides programs and services to help our students come to school ready to learn. Specifically, the levy supports early childhood programs, ensuring children in our kindergarten are prepared to succeed; after-school and summer mentoring programs, so students stay engaged and are safe in school; child abuse prevention and intervention services for stressed families most at risk; and children in foster care programs helping kids in foster care succeed. The levy annually invests about $10 million in programs addressing the needs of children in Portland. The renewal of this levy will ensure that over 14,000 of Portland's neediest children, 50% of whom live in extreme poverty, receive services, these important services and support. I want to thank our fellow county and city officials, like Commissioner Cifuri and Commissioner Salzman, for taking a leadership role to ensure the passage of this levy, and I urge all of you to vote in support of our resolution. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm Deborah Cifuri, Multnomah County Commissioner, and I'm really excited because this is my first time testifying. I think that both of you have done a great job of introduction, so I'm just going to talk a little bit, add a few more points to the Portland Children's Levy, and ask you for your endorsement. As you just heard, this May, we are asking voters to approve a five-year renewal, the second time we will have renewed the levy. And I'm hopeful and confident that the voters of Portland will support the levy, recognizing the levy's 10-year track record of success, investing in proven and cost-effective programs. One other point that wasn't mentioned is that the levy, when it was first introduced, there was a commitment made that administrative services would be capped at 5% or less, which means that 95 cents of every dollar raised goes directly into children's programs in the city. In 2008, the levy committee responded to the needs of the community by adding a separate focus on foster care, which you heard about. And in this renewal, we have added an additional area of childhood hunger. While there won't be a specific carve-out like there is currently for the other four, hunger is going to be kind of overarching among all, this renewal will respond to the needs of our community because we recognize the devastating effects that prolonged economic downturn is having on our children. Studies show that hungry children have lower school achievement, increased school absenteeism, have an impaired ability to think, increased behavioral problems, and are more likely to repeat a grade. I have the honor and the privilege to serve on the Children's Levy Allocation Committee. It's a five-member volunteer board. The city and the county each have one elected official spot. We each appoint a public member, and then there is one spot for the business community. So I think that's it. Unless you have any other questions, I'm hopeful that you all will support it, as I hope that the voters of Portland do in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Smith, do you have anything to add?
Just thank you for your partnership and supporting numbers of programs that work closely with our schools and our school communities to make sure our kids are successful. And it's gotten tighter and tighter of really looking at what are the outcomes we're achieving together. So just thank you for your work and for working to have this be successful at the Battle Box again.
Thank you.
Great. We will now consider Resolution 4749 a resolution in support of Measure 26150, renewing the Portland Children's Levy. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, so I have Director Knowles moves, Director Morton, and Sergeant Second.
I didn't actually say anything.
Second to motion to adopt Resolution 4749. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment on this item?
No.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Just one comment. I mean, having said on the other side of the grant-making committee in regards to actually advocating for a community organization and a program, juntos aprendemos, early childhood program that also prepares parents to become more involved in the schools, it's always a great, I thought it was a great program. I think it's a great investment on the part of the city, and also one that was conscious in regards to dealing with some of the, addressing some of the inequities that are out there and trying to close that opportunity gap for students before they get into the school. So I'm very supportive of this.
I guess I'd also like to add that I know some of the staff, I get to work with some of the staff, and that capping the overhead, it is an extremely lean organization that administers this, and the incredible programs that they wind up funding really support every kid in our school, to Director Gonzalez's point. They are what we call those wraparound services. They are those services that our kids, who are most vulnerable, absolutely need. So I'm so thankful that both Commissioner Salzman, Counselor Salzman, thought of it and brought it to voters in 2002, and that the voters approved it, proved it overwhelmingly in 2008, and I'm hopeful again that they will again in 2013. So with that, we'll now vote on Resolution 4749. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4749 is approved by a vote of 7 to 0. With Student Representative Garcia voting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we get to hear another installment of our high school cluster presentations. It's always exciting to have our principals with us, so welcome. These presentations featuring a different school cluster each month allows the board to conduct a deeper dive on milestone data at the school level, so we look forward to hearing about how you're doing and what you're doing as a cluster, and how it aligns with our academic performance and our goals. We've allocated one hour for this item, 30 minutes presentation, and 30 minutes for questions from the board. And just a heads up, clusters that have come before you have underestimated their amount of time, so I will help you keep your time with 30 minutes, but if you could just keep an eye on that, that would be greatly appreciated, not to cut you short. Superintendent Smith, could you please introduce this item?
I will, and I would just like to say welcome to all the Lincoln Cluster principals. This is actually a really wonderful opportunity to see you as an entire cluster and really hear your story, both about your individual schools, but also your whole feeder pattern, so we're really excited about that. And I will introduce Sue Ann Higgins, our chief academic officer, who will then introduce the regional administrators for the cluster and each of you. So, Sue Ann.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to welcome all of the leaders of the Lincoln Cluster Schools here this evening, and I'd like to welcome Sasha Perrins up to the podium, the regional administrators for the K8 programs, and he'll be followed by Trip Godall, and then you'll hear specifically from some of the principals, although we don't have the opportunity to hear from everybody tonight. So, Sasha.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I know that the principals of Lincoln Cluster have lots to say to you, and I'm going to let them get started and introduce themselves as they go through.
I'm Makari Trenow. I'm the principal at Metropolitan Learning Center.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Spaulding, Assistant Principal at Metropolitan Learning
Good evening, I'm Jeff Spaulding, Assistant Principal at Metropolitan Learning Center.
I'm Tanya Gaddis, Principal at Forest Park.
Hello, Jane Fielding, Principal at Bridal Mile.
Cindy Roby, Principal at Ainsworth.
I'm Scott Choat, the Principal of Chapman Elementary School.
I'm Brad Pearson, the Assistant Principal.
I'm Jill Sage, the Principal at Skyline K.
I'm Jonathan James, the Assistant Principal at East West Sylvan.
Kate Voice, Principal at East West Sylvan.
Jill Bailey, other Assistant Principal at East West Sylvan.
Peyton Chapman, Principal of Lincoln High School.
Actually, can you do me a favor? If you're starting the presentation, can the people that are doing the present, or is it going to go right down the? Oh, you're all doing it. Okay. Great. That's great.
All right, great. I'm Makari Trainum again, and I am the Principal at Metropolitan Learning Center. We are also known as MLC. We are the only public kindergarten through 12th grade alternative school here in Portland, and I would say in all of Oregon. MLC has consistently been rated outstanding, and we have 447 students enrolled in kindergarten through 12th grade. We pride ourselves with offering students an alternative way to access their learning by incorporating experience into their academic work. We also infuse our character traits of respect, courage, compassion, integrity, and self-discipline as building blocks for students K-12. We offer a safe environment for students who have participated in non-traditional schooling like Montessori, homeschool, or a Waldorf education, in addition to students who may experience bullying or hostile environments because they don't feel safe being their true selves. In June 2012, we established the MLC Educational Foundation, which raised over $10,000 in three months, which allowed us to fund a less-than-half-time technical position, or technology position. However, this position will be phased out for the next school year because of funding. MLC only offers library and physical education for electives for our entire K-12 student body. All other electives are offered through parental support via our elective program, specifically for our first through eighth-grade students. This is all done, working with a scarce allotment of a half-time librarian and half-time PE teacher. MLC has a number of challenges. We have seen a steady decline in our graduation rates. We have capacity issues due to a pool that has been out of commission since 2007. Our allotment of FTE to operate MLC denies us the opportunity to offer academic support to our struggling learners, or the appropriate level of counseling support to students with mental health issues. Additionally, we have been deeply immersed in our racial equity work, supported by our PTSA. We were able to send six of our teachers that's on our equity team down to the summit this year. And in the work that we've been doing, we have noted that although we do not have a specific neighborhood assigned to us, and we pull students from all over Portland, our racial and ethnic diversity at MLC is minimal and does not reflect Portland Public Schools' student demographics. Something that you may not know about MLC is that we are located adjacent to Cooch Park, which is owned by Portland Public Schools. We consider the city of Portland as our neighborhood, and almost 45 years ago, we were founded by Amesa Gilman as a free school, and have continued to evolve in finding non-traditional ways to connect students to academic content while addressing students' social and emotional needs. Thank you.
I'm Tanya Gaddis, Principal at Forest Park. This is my second Lincoln Cluster position, and happy to be where I am. Forest Park has 520 students in grades K through 5. They're known as the School of Excellence. We've had an excellent rating from ODE and Outstanding for the past 12 years. Forest Park's really an international community. We have Nike and Intel are primary employers in the area. 64% of our families identify as white. It's probably, and that probably doesn't reflect our families that live or come from the Middle East and the Near East. We represent many countries at Forest Park: Australia, China, Korea, Italy, Holland, India, Iran, Indonesia, Japan, and Israel. Like all the schools in the Lincoln Cluster, we have pockets of underserved students, and providing adequate services for all of those students are a challenge. Forest Park is blessed with robust parent and PTA foundation support. Currently, our students receive one period of technology and two periods of PE as part of their program. Something you might not know about Forest Park, we are the second-nearest school in PPS, 16-years-old, and our K-1 and 2 students, our primary students, are served inside the building, and over 50% of our students, our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders, are all housed in portables outside the building.
Well, good evening. I'm Jane Fielding, Principal at Bridal Mile Elementary School. Bridal Mile is also known as the School of Excellence, having received outstanding ratings for many consecutive years. It's also a school that serves a student population that routinely meets and exceeds the benchmarks in large percentages. It's a school that has been really blessed to be able to continue with its enrichment program throughout the years. We continue to have a 1.0 full-time music program, and our music specialist also teaches band and strings. We have a half-time PE specialist, and this year, we have our library, which is the heart of the school, open four days a week, and staff. We're very lucky to have a wonderful media assistant who loves books, knows libraries, and is continuing to pass that love and knowledge on to our students who are avid readers. These things have been made possible by the school foundation, or at least supported by the school foundation, which was established in 1994. They help us financially to continue these enrichment programs, and then we have the rest of the things that our families do. Bridal Mile is really held up by the parents and the community. I just checked, and we have over 3,000 hours of volunteer time. Any day, you can find parents in classes, reading with students, helping them with writing, offering extra pairs of hands with the science experiments to make sure they go well, out on playground for duty, and in the cafeteria washing the tables. We simply couldn't do it without them. A fact that you might not know about Bridal Mile is that the newly combined underserved percentage that's being reported is currently 28% of our population at Bridal Mile. However, we are largely a white community, a white staff, serving white students in a white community, and that puts us with the challenge of making sure that we move forward strongly with the equity work. This is work that's difficult and challenging on adult level, and sometimes we neglect to deal with it on the child's level, but the children are our best hope, and without the continued focus on equity work in all of our schools, the best we can hope for is continued misperceptions, and that's not enough. So, we need to move forward strongly with this in all of our schools, because the time is now and the place is here.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Roby, the Principal at Ainsworth. We are also an outstanding school, nine years in a row. Our current enrollment is 565 students in grades kindergarten through 5th grade. My foundation is able to provide funding that allows me to staff full-time PE, full-time music, and a half-time arts specialist. Ainsworth has two programs, Spanish immersion and English. The Lincoln Cluster K-12 Spanish immersion program begins in my school. 302 students are currently in the Spanish immersion program. 52 students come in each year into kindergarten via the lottery. This year, over 200 families attended tours and two Connect to Kindergarten evening presentations. 158 families applied for our 52 openings in kindergarten, and these families have just received their letters from enrollment and transfer. We are a strand-one school in our third year of equity work. I have an invisible group of students at Ainsworth. They are the Hispanic students who are not meeting at grade-level benchmarks. My PTA is able to budget for our English literacy coach and Spanish literacy coach working one-on-one with our struggling students during the school day to give additional supports beyond the classroom. Our school is in the second year of positive behavioral interventions and supports, and our discipline data reflects that our students are following the four Bs of Ainsworth in all common areas of our school: be responsible, be respectful, be safe, and be kind. A challenge for Ainsworth is our two separated campus configuration. The 2nd and 3rd graders are located in a building that is physically separated from the main building by a forested path about two city blocks in length. 7- and 8-year-olds travel in triads when coming to the main building for illness, parent pickup, injury, or when called to the office. We have walkie-talkies this year, as supplied by security services, but this is not the best safety practice for our students. Our students also miss about 10 minutes of instruction each time the class travels outside their classroom to the main campus for lunch, PE, music, library, or an assembly. Our Lincoln Cluster principals work together using the PPS Connect site to share documents, calendars, and ideas. We want to work smarter together to make the Lincoln Cluster cohesive. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Choat, the Principal at Chapman, K-5 Elementary School. Chapman is considered a model school with an enrollment of 605 students. Next year's projection is over 630. With additional funding and support provided through PTA and foundation, Chapman students enjoy a comprehensive and robust academic program. All students have PE, music, computers, guidance, and libraries, and library at least once a week. Mandarin will be added to our program next year. Chapman's in our third year of courageous conversation equity work. Our equity team plans, implements, and delivers professional development at each of our late openings and one monthly staff meeting. Equity is at the heart of all of our professional development. Chapman's staff works together during professional learning communities to examine student data, student work samples, move through the cycle of inquiry, conduct book studies, and share research-based instructional strategies to support all students and close the racial achievement gap. Chapman has two special ed behavior classrooms. This year, we had the support of a behavior coach and a qualified mental health provider. Next year, due to cuts in special education, the behavior rooms will have larger class sizes and be without the support of the behavior coaches and qualified mental health providers, resulting in the loss of essential supports for our most fragile students. We serve a very economically diverse population. Chapman has about 32% of our students on free or reduced lunch, and about 30% of our students are of color. 8% of Chapman families are considered homeless. In our efforts to meet the milestone of all 3rd-grade students meeting or exceeding reading benchmark, we've implemented a reading intervention program for struggling readers. This year, we have seven educational assistants who provide literacy support to each classroom for 45 minutes a day. We've partnered with Portland Reading Foundation. We have a part-time retired teacher and community volunteers to help deliver a reading intervention program to our struggling readers. Another challenge is our rapidly increasing enrollment. We have little space to accommodate, as we are well above capacity already. Many buildings are being constructed in our catchment area, with about 1,800 new units planned in the next couple of years, 750 units to be opened by this fall, potentially bringing many more students to Chapman. The enrollment boom has already pushed Chapman beyond capacity and is considered an urgent space and boundary issue in the district. Finally, at Chapman, we're excited about the coming supports to the arts through the newly passed arts tax. We look forward to establishing a clear articulation for music education for grades K-12 in the Lincoln Cluster. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jill Sage, in my first year as Principal at Skyline. It's an honor to be here tonight to speak to you about Skyline and the Lincoln Cluster. Skyline is an outstanding school in a unique setting. Due to our large catchment area, we have students who travel over an hour on the bus each way to get to school. As many of you know, it's a very proud and tight community. We are the only K-8 in the Lincoln Cluster, and we serve 190 K-5 students and 90 middle school students. Our diversity comes primarily from differences in socioeconomic status and the range of students with disabilities that we serve. The number of students eligible for free and reduced lunch almost doubled over the last year to 26%, the greatest increase for a single school in the state. Our underserved population percentage is now at 40%. Due to that, we have implemented a strong response to intervention program to support the students that are one or more years behind in reading performance. These actions have already shown to successfully improve our students' reading strategies and performance in class, and move us closer to meeting the 3rd-grade benchmark of all students meeting or exceeding the reading standard. We've also started a weekend backpack food program to help our families who cannot make ends meet during the year. It is supplied by food from the Sunshine Pantry, which is headed by a former Skyline student. We were the first public school in Oregon to be authorized by the International Baccalaureate Program in both the primary years program and the middle years program. International-mindedness with a focus on multiple perspectives dovetails nicely with the work that we do with our staff around courageous conversations. We are also a certified green school and have a working wind turbine on site, and our strength lies in the power of our community. This year, we've already logged over 4,000 volunteer hours by over 145 different people. We are challenged to provide a strong core program because of our size and distance from other PPS schools. We rely funding from our community to smooth out those edges. As the only K-8 in the Cluster, it's also difficult to provide equity in program compared to what East and West Sylvan is able to provide due to their program size. Staff mobility also significantly impacts our ability to maintain a strong IB program, because often, we lose teachers who have taken on and gone through valuable IB training to other schools, and this not only costs the district money, but it also, we lose momentum in our program going forward. Despite all these challenges, we are thriving as a school and a community.
Hi, I'm Kate Voice, again, from East West Sylvan Middle School. Just a little, you guys hear a lot of numbers, but I'm going to throw some more at you. This year, our school is approaching 900 students, and next year, we'll be at almost 1,000. And just to give you a little perspective, the two middle schools that are close to that are Beaumont and Mount Tabor, at just over 600. We're larger than two of our high schools and equal with about, with a third. Because of that, there are opportunities and challenges with being such a big school. As Jill mentioned, some of the opportunities are being able to offer a broader range of courses for our students, such as, we have four world languages that we offer. We offer Arabic in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, with the support of a grant that Principal Chapman has written. We also offer Mandarin, Spanish, and French. It's amazing. We also have a Spanish immersion program, so some of our students are studying three languages. Because we have received such outstanding students from these outstanding schools, we too are an outstanding school. Last year, we got the highest rating, the Level 5, from the new way the state is assessing schools. I was very proud of that, because that also has to do with growth. We've really focused our teachers on not just meeting and exceeding, because we do get kids, so many kids that are meeting and exceeding coming to us. We're focusing on the all-kids growing every year. We have, one of the challenges is that we are on two separate campuses. They are separated by a freeway. They have different ZIP codes, different police forces, and different fire stations. It takes anywhere from 6 to 15 minutes, depending on traffic, to go between the two schools. We have 23% of our kids are tag, 15% free and reduced lunch, and about 27% of our kids identify as non-white. Our challenges, some of our challenges are, I know we're perceived as a group of schools where we have kids that do really well, and we do have that. We also have kids that struggle, and one of the things that's challenging is having a school of 900. John, Jill, and I try to know every student by name, and try to know almost 1,800 parents by name, too. That's a little more challenging, so we're shooting for the 900 kids. We also want to really know those kids and know what they need to be successful. In doing that, we know that every kid needs something a little bit different. We were looking, as we were looking at equity at our school and disaggregating data, we noticed, everyone is saying, "Look at your black boys. How are your black boys doing?" So, we were looking at our data, and we found that we were really, our kids that struggled most were our Latinos and our Latinas. So, kind of thinking about that, listening to stories around the school, one of my teachers came to me and talked to me about two of her kids that were in the English side of our program, and she would give instruction, and these two girls that were native Spanish speakers would turn to each other and talk in Spanish to clarify what the directions were. would turn to each other and talk in Spanish to clarify what the directions were from this teacher. And it made me start thinking, well, how can we help these kids be more successful? So started thinking about, is it possible that these kids might be more successful and be able to become biliterate, not just bilingual, by being in our Spanish immersion program? So we have carefully looked at all of our native and heritage Spanish speakers as they come in at sixth and seventh grade to determine if that might be a good fit for them. The kids that, Latinos and Latinas that we have put in our Spanish immersion program have shown amazing growth academically, behaviorally, and culturally. So far, it's been a really positive experience for those kids. It's not that we're gonna put every kid in there, but if they can read and write somewhat in Spanish and can fit into the kids that have been in immersion since kindergarten, we have found it to be very successful. Because our school is large, because we are a Westside school that does have a lot of money, we don't get as much FTE, and I totally understand that, which creates challenges for us with our struggling students because we have large classes. So we really try to look at kids one by one that are struggling. I'd like to tell you one more story about a struggling kid. Student was missing more than 50% of the school year. He had attendance problems all the way back into elementary school. So we created a plan to try to get this student to school, and we worked the plan, including police officers. This boy now comes to school, probably 85 to 90% of the time has all As and Bs. He was failing before. That is how we work with our students at West Sylvan, even though it's really large. So that being said, we just, we know and own all of our students. We try for different strategies for each of our students to find something that will unlock their potential so they can thrive at our school. Thank you.
Good evening. Peyton Chapman, principal, but I'm here today.
I usually have the opportunity to introduce the high school principals, so I don't want to miss out this opportunity. Superintendent Smith, Board Chair Belial, and board members, once again, I have the pleasure of introducing an exceptional school leader, Lincoln principal Peyton Chapman. Peyton is fast approaching her 20th year with Portland Public Schools. She has been a dedicated teacher at Selwood, Husford, and Franklin. She was an assistant principal at Madison High School, and she's been the Lincoln principal now for seven of the past years. Peyton is a tireless advocate for Lincoln students and the Lincoln community. She believes in high academic standards for all students as well as extracurricular opportunities for her students. It's a school that's recognized in the state as the top comprehensive high school. It's also recognized by a number of outside agencies, US News and World Report, Washington Post, Newsweek, as one of the top high schools in America. She's an instructional leader, she's a fundraiser, and at times, she's even an ambassador, having spent, how many days this year in Qatar?
Ten.
Ten days traveling with a group of students overseas to Qatar. Alexia, I think you're a part of that group, and represented Portland Public well. So it's my pleasure to introduce a really tireless principal that does not get a lot of time off, Peyton Chapman.
Thank you, Trip. I'm here tonight as the principal, but also as head of household for 1,500 students. And I come to you, as any parent would, with my pride and with my dreams and with my fears and our failures, and I want you all to know our children. So Lincoln High School is an urban gem where it's cool to be smart and follow your passions, and students know they have to be involved in something other than intending classes in order to thrive. We are often recognized for our nationally thriving International Baccalaureate Program, our International Studies Center, six foreign language strands. In addition, Lincoln celebrates and deeply values the visual and performing arts. Art classes are a part of our core program and never viewed as electives. And Lincoln, we're also very privileged to have actively involved parents and a host of supportive community partners who support our school. I could talk forever about the things I'm proud of. I gave each of you one of our red books. It has a lot of data and information about clubs, activities, college acceptances, and all of those things. But Lincoln is a thriving school with a lot of challenges. When I first came to Lincoln from Madison High School, I thought, "At-risk adolescents." I won't be working with as many of those. I thought of at-risk adolescents as students from high poverty and abusive backgrounds. I quickly realized that at-risk adolescent is a redundant term. All teenagers are at risk. And one of the books that I highly recommend all board members read is The Price of Privilege. It talks about how statistically, students from privileged backgrounds are more likely to suffer from stress and anxiety, depression, drug and alcohol use, suicide, cutting, anorexia, and a host of other issues caused by high expectations and the pace of their lives. These are just a few other books that I've become very familiar with. Dialectical Behavior for Eating Disorders and Suicide Assessments and Mindfulness-Based Therapy for Depression. I highly recommend A Beautiful Boy and What Families Go Through When Teenagers Struggle with Drug and Alcohol Use. Why Boys Fail. We have an achievement gap at Lincoln. Our girls are outperforming our boys as they are across the district and in this country and safeguarding LGBT students, LGBT, sorry, at schools. And I just picked a handful of the ones that I've personally found most powerful to recommend to you, but I can honestly say that all students at Lincoln and across this district and our high schools are at-risk adolescents. There are a lot of things that I'm proud of in terms of the data, and I've given you a few extra data pieces other than the data book that you received. And one of those things I'm proud of is our four-year cohort graduation rate milestone work. You received data that took you through 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012, I've added. And I'm really excited to say that we went from a low in 2010, 11 with 39% of our African-American students graduating within four years to a low with the same subgroup of 80% of our black students graduating with four years for 2011, 2012. All of our subgroup rates are up, and our Asian 94% for your cohort rate, Hispanic 96%. They're outpacing our Asian and white students, and white students at 89%, and our multi-ethnic at 80%. And that's been some significant work at Lincoln by faculty and support staff. I'm also proud of the growth of IB at Lincoln. Lincoln is for all, or IB is for all students. We have an open access IB program, and 80% of our students take one or more IB classes. We also are looking at the subgroup data. So for example, I think I gave you data for 2011, 2012, and 2012, 2013. We're proud of that, but it's also one of our fears and failures in that 33% to 50% given the year of our black students are taking one or more IB classes. So while 80% or more take an IB class, we know that we won't be equitable until all of our students are taking one or more IB classes. And there are three ways to go with IB. So there is the full diploma program, and we have doubled the number of full diploma students from 2001 to 2012. And we have increased the number of students who also test in IB. So 2001, 112 students took a test, and now it's 283 students with 160 of those in advanced calculus math classes. So our city needs students to be competent in calculus and the advanced physics and chemistry, and 283 tests overall. So more students are taking tests, and the question I often hear is, you know, why are so few, only 60 students are full IB diploma students? You can be a full IB if you want to completely challenge yourself and take two years of college-level courses. You can become a certificate student and test in those courses that you feel ready for, and students often earn nearly, if not fully, a year of college. And you can test in one or two subjects, must, more like AP and other schools, that you want to challenge yourself. So the research shows, and this is the important piece, that just taking one IB class will better prepare you and give you the confidence to apply and be accepted in college and to do better once you're there. But again, we want to increase our subgroups. And I would note, too, our Latino students, that 72.2% taking at least one IB course is up from past years. And then it's a little hard to read, so I said 33% of our African-Americans, but we have multi-ethnic now, and many of our students see themselves as multi-ethnic more than one particular subgroup, and that's up to 76% of our students taking an IB course. I'm also very proud of the work that my vice principals and our teachers and our support staff have done around the discipline rates. We've reduced our relative rate from 6 to 3.2 for our black students, and we've reduced the relative rate for our Latino students from 8%, 3.1 to 1 for the relative rate, or 8% to 2% of our discipline issues. So we've cut our over-representation of discipline in half in two years. Some of the fears, again, I worry about our students who aren't on track to graduate, and our biggest barrier is funding. I come to you this week with an additional 1.2 FTE in cuts after five years of cuts. It's very challenging to run a full schedule that has, that meets, helps students meet the state graduation requirements, that meets the IB requirements, and meets the support requirements that our struggling students need. 20% of our students struggle and need additional supports. I've given you a packet that shows all of the interventions. So again, 100% of students really need support, but at Lincoln, 80% are Tier 1, 15% Tier 2, and 5% Tier 3. And the packet is, I think, 33 pages long with four slides each, listing all of the supports that we've put in place just in the last three to four meetings. Everything from early conferences in October for academic party kids to STAR meetings for teachers and staff to talk to each other and using the PSYOP protocol in our classrooms. Our math department's gone to proficiency-based assessments. We have a tutoring center, a testing retest center, a writing center. We're partnering with PSU and groups like REE. We've increased our diversity club so that students feel empowered to see themselves in our school as leaders. So we now have Black Student Union, Latino Student Union, Asian Pacific Islander Student Union, Jewish Student Union, Native American Student Union, and Telling Our Stories group, as well as several others that I'm sure I didn't mention. But when you have more time, this is a packet of interventions that we believe are evidence-based to support our students. Finally, I think that I'll focus on one more barrier and one more dream, and they're somewhat connected. But our barrier is the fact that we don't have adequate facilities, and it's impacting instruction, and we don't have an articulated-aligned K-12 framework in the Lincoln Cluster. I would love personally to see a K-12 IB program. I think we could look to King Elementary to see some of their successes in terms of using IB as an equity driver at the K through 5 or K through 8 levels. We have one feeder that has a mid-year program, and a much larger feeder who doesn't have a mid-year program, trying to dovetail that into Lincoln and to our IB for juniors and seniors is impossible. The framework alone would articulate and align the instructional strategies and assessment pedagogies and philosophies. Within the facilities, we have, we're at 147% capacity. We have a facilities index rating of 27. Anything over 20 is not sustainable. And we have, we have teachers and students in classrooms without natural light and inadequate ventilation, inadequate theater spaces and gymnasium spaces, and facilities are a real problem that was flagged in our recent accreditation site visit, where one of our required actions is to work with PAPs and the board to create a plan to improve those facilities. I personally would love to see a 612 or 712 rebuild on the Lincoln site that would allow for better articulation and alignment, closer teacher collaboration between the middle school and the high school level to really shift the equity work. Thank you. I'm sure there'll be some questions, but I appreciate your time and your willingness to listen.
Great. Thank you, and thank you all for being here. Now, we'll open it up to questions from the board, and I think that, I hope that microphone's still out there because my experience has been that we pepper questions at random places, and sometimes we ask for somebody to step up, and sometimes we direct it with an individual. Somebody that has a, like to start off with a question, comment?
I'm gonna start just with a general comment, given that Peyton is right there, and I actually met her initially, I think, when she was at Madison High School, so I know of her commitment and advocacy for addressing the needs of students who historically have not been served well. So I want to thank her for that, and also for advocacy in the Achievement Compact Committee and the push, I think, for us to strive to get, to set higher goals in that process. But also, you know, one of the things, years ago, I read, and we're gonna be discussing some of these things in regards to the school improvement plans, and I was impressed by the fact that Lincoln High School was pretty transparent in regards to how well it was serving students or not well students. And one particular, you know, line that I had read is that, I think, the disclosure of, you know, African-American students not being necessarily present or well-served by the IB program and not necessarily completing, you know, a diploma and not in the history of that, of that program. And I was glad to hear that, that there was some improvements in regards to more participation, but also, I guess, wanted to know more the specifics of students that have, particularly African-American students that we referenced, you know, a few years back, you know, how have we actually gotten some of them to complete that diploma in terms of IB?
I have a lot of thoughts on this one, but we interviewed every one of our African-American students two or three years ago to ask them, "What do you know about IB? Are you successful at Lincoln? If not, why not? And what are the barriers to your success?" And we honestly were expecting to hear more things like, "We feel marginalized, you know, Lincoln struggles with racism, and, you know, adults aren't treating us the same." And we really were looking for things like that, actually. And what the students said time after time was, "We don't feel like we were prepared to access IB." And in fact, we had more transfers at the time, and students would say, you know, the students coming from West Sylvan, and particularly in the Spanish immersion program, they're doing really well, and they're accessing the IB, maybe they're part of the 33%. But the students who didn't go to West Sylvan said, you know, "We were in a different cluster, and we feel like we were ripped off." A couple of students, you know, got mad, a couple started to cry. They said, "Our counselors told us to apply and transfer to Lincoln, and we were the kind of kid that should go to Lincoln, and within weeks, we realized that we didn't have the same skills. We hadn't been exposed to lab sciences, advanced math, foreign language, and we just shut down." So, you know, we're looking at that. Of course, now we don't have any transfers. So one of my worries is, is the percentage of African-Americans going up because they are just now going to come from our feeder cluster where we have more, hopefully giving them more access to lab sciences and foreign languages and advanced, you know, math, simply in part because they have the numbers to offer those courses. When you get really small schools, it's hard to staff multiple levels of either foreign language or math, and some of the facilities issue around lab sciences. But I, you know, we know we need to examine the role of white privilege in a predominantly white school, although our school is becoming more diverse. You know, three out of four families, I guess, would identify as white, but 25% don't. And again, the students, it is hard, you know, if you're marginalized in Portland, and I used to feel that students were marginalized at Madison, and, you know, think how marginalized you'd feel at Lincoln if you were a student of color without any transfers. We are, I'm worried that we're re-redlining our schools, not on purpose, not by design, but in effect, in Portland Public Schools, without any transfers. We live in a segregated city, so our African-American population's been cut in half with zero transfers. So, you know, students do say it's hard. If you're the only person in one class, you know, that threat of stereotype that you're calling on me and I can't speak for all people of my skin color or... calling on me, and I can't speak for all people of my skin color, or... So we're working with faculty not to put people on blast individually in class, but how can you reduce stereotype threat, increase participation, put students in positions of leadership, engage all kids? Some of it's instructionally, and some of it is, you know, how students are prepared to access advanced opportunities. It's very hard, particularly in math and science and foreign language, to make up lost time. And that's one of the reasons I think we need to be able to have a stronger framework, a more articulated framework in the K-eight to K-12 level. And an IB framework would be very structured for that.
Thank you.
And the students at King of color are doing well. And many schools and many districts are using IB, particularly primary year program, mid-year programs, as an equity driver. So I would encourage not only our cluster, but our district to look at, where are the current IB programs? King, on the other hand, those students are being prepared to be IB learners and use learner profile, and they're not going to feed into an IB high school. So, in our master planning, we really need to take a look at how we can give students access to those foundational skills, and then line them up with IB programs so that they can access the open access opportunities.
Other thoughts, questions?
I'll ask a question. First, I want to make a comment. So my children went through, my oldest one went through Skyline, then West Sylvan. East didn't exist, and then Skyline, Forest Park, West, and then Lincoln. My younger one had the East-West experience. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for bringing the books that you did and kind of highlighting some of the challenges for higher-income families, perhaps we should say. When my oldest son was at Lincoln, a child died every single year that he was there. I'm not sure if that happens at other high schools, but it was eye-opening to see some of the challenges that kids were facing, either drugs or alcohol-related, whatever it might be. So I do agree with your statement that, you know, all of our children are, at some level, at risk at this age, and it's important for us as adults to be paying good attention and to have counseling support and that sort of thing. I had a question that's really probably targeted more to the Ainsworth, West Sylvan, and Lincoln principals, and it has to do with our Spanish immersion on the West Side and what's happening there. So my, as background, a couple of years ago, we, as a board, made a decision that we would have four high schools that were designated as regional Spanish immersion high schools. And two of the high schools at the time, Madison and Lincoln, only had one feeder school. And we recognized that that was a problem, that we really want to have two feeder schools going up so that eventually at your high school level, you have a robust program or as robust as you can. And since that time, Madison, we have added another feeder school. I think the intention was to potentially maybe look at a Spanish immersion feeder school starting up in the Wilson Cluster and then coming on up. So you sort of had a West Side Spanish immersion program. And certainly at Wilson, some of our feeder schools are small enough that we actually could, it would probably help maybe attract some students also, almost like the Magnet originally was at Ainsworth. But since that time, the board also changed the feeder pattern, and we made a decision that, once you hit eighth grade, you have to go back to your home neighborhood high school. And so Lincoln's now at a situation where we have one feeder school that, with two classes, that ultimately feed up to Lincoln, but many of those kids aren't actually even allowed to go on to Lincoln. And so it seems that the program is somewhat at risk, and it's certainly not in keeping with what our original board policy was of having kind of a West Side Spanish immersion regional program also. So I guess my questions to any of you, if you would like to do it, is what is it that we should or could, or in your dreams would be doing to support more immersion programs on the West Side?
You know, I would recommend that the board revisit that vote. The vote has threatened the stability of the Spanish immersion program. I don't know why, because they're just, the numbers of students that are going back to different clusters won't create a Spanish immersion program at any one of those clusters. It's not like we have fifteen kids and they all come from the Roosevelt Cluster, so if we just don't let them transfer, they'll create a thriving Spanish immersion in Roosevelt. They come from one or two kids from every one of the other clusters, and that's not enough to create a thriving program there, and it's threatening to destabilize, I think, one of the oldest Spanish immersion programs in, you know, the state. It's hard to backfill with students who have to be at the level that they've gained that level of proficiency. And also, it's just, in terms of all this, you have kids, it takes a village to raise children, and, you know, they grew up with a cohort of learners, and they were told they'd be part of a K-12 cohort. And I think for those individual children, because they won't, again, be going back together, say, to the Roosevelt Cluster, they will be going one or two everywhere, which really divides their cohort and destabilizes our program. So, you know, you have to look through the equity lens, and if I'm wrong about that, you know, but I think if you review it, the solution isn't creating a big gain anywhere else, and it's really threatening our program because there is natural attrition. You know, families have to move, and we lose a few that way, or a few will choose a private school, but it's really hard to backfill at the high school level.
Can I speak to that?
It is a program of attrition, and especially since it's kind of a one-way program. Kids, it's not part Spanish-speaking kids, part English-speaking kids, and that's part of the reason I'm doing what I'm doing, is inviting native speakers into the program as they come into middle school. Right now, our program is the largest it's ever been, and part of it's because I've been inviting that, inviting families in. But there needs to be a systemic way to, in our district, to bring those families in. I think about, when you look at the research for native speakers and going into two-way immersion programs, it's a really good thing for native speakers. It helps them a lot. And I think that we, as principals, no matter where we are, need to think about our children and what's best for them. I think that we could have late entry for, at Ainsworth, we could have late entry for kids at West Sylvan, and kind of stem the tide there. The other piece is, the enrollment and transfer process is still allowing East Side kids into the Ainsworth program via the siblings clause, which continues the problem where once the white entitled people know how to work the system and get their kids into the program that they want, they get the first one in, and the rest of their family can flow into that, which then, when they get to high school, they're supposed to go back to their other programs. I think if we seriously have four quadrants in our city and immersion programs in each, that's where the kids should be coming from, is what I believe. I may be crazy.
And I, you know, want to thank you for that, because I think that that's one of the things that really hasn't been explored. I remember, you know, and, you know, it's a way of disclosing, you know, my daughter was recruited, actually, to the West Sylvan immersion program, in part because there were not that many native children that spoke Spanish. And so with a lot of hesitation on my part, I allowed her to go to West Sylvan. You know, she was going to Beach, and, you know, it's a neighborhood school, and didn't know too well in regards to how she would do, particularly, you know, given the lack of diversity in regards to the ethnic composition there, and also the class differences that existed. So, but I was glad to hear your comment earlier in regards to how do we best serve students, and how do we provide those opportunities? And, you know, when we were looking at this discussion, you know, in regards to, you know, sending kids back to where they came from, in terms of their neighborhoods, I was also looking at the numbers, you know, of the other neighboring schools to West Sylvan that had Latino children that were not necessarily accessing those programs in the West Side, that there was, this was an opportunity to look at, how do we outreach to those students to say, "Look, I mean, here's a program, as you stated, that is improving, you know, has the data to show that it can excel a student and improve their achievement, but we're not consciously doing it." I'm glad that you are, by the way. And I hope that other principals in the cluster take, you know, take advantage of that opportunity also to say, "Look," because, you know, that's one of the things that I know that the principal at Atkinson does in discussions with other schools in her cluster, says, "Hey, you know, if you have the students, I can make this opportunity available for them." That is probably gonna be a better fit, but I don't think that we do that throughout the district, you know, in that sense. So, thank you.
But it's still a one-way, one-way immersion, not a two-way. It's not a true dual immersion program. Is that correct?
Most of our kids come from university homes.
Right. And I mean, part of it, too, for me at least, is that the priority we're really setting is, when wanting to expand immersion, to make sure that it is a two-way, so that we are serving the children of color. So it's as wonderful, as an advantage and enhancement for students as it is to have the access to a Spanish immersion program. To me, that's not the highest priority, so I would love to be able to see access somewhere on the West Side to a two-way immersion, articulate K through twelve, and then we can be sure that it's not simply a means of accessing particular schools, but it truly is a program that's serving children of color. So that's, anyway.
Can I just say one more thing really quickly, is that...
Peyton, can you give her that? Thank you.
In these discussions, it's, I think, principals think of, "These are my kids, you know, and I want to serve my kids the best I can." And I think we need to move beyond that, and, because we are a district and we can support different kids a lot of different ways, and look at, here's a program for a kid. It's not at my school, I'm gonna lose this one kid, but it's the best thing for the kid, rather than about my students.
I just, I don't really have a question, so I think we can talk about this more, too, in the staffing discussions, subsequently, just seeing how much enrollment dips are affecting staffing in particular, but just the whole issue of overcapacity and boundary changes, whether it's north-south on the West Side or across the river, and this isn't necessary, unless, you know, you guys have thoughts, you've been discussing amongst yourselves, maybe more for the staff, enrollment and balancing, and the superintendent's advisory committee, but that's really the discussion, you know, when you hear the incredibly robust program that you can have with the larger numbers, and the loss of program that we're getting when there's a smaller program or one that's losing numbers, and that really gets at the heart of the enrollment balancing challenge and need in this district. So it's a really, even above and beyond a community differential, I mean, we see pretty stark differences in this cluster, obviously, in their ability to fundraise and provide additional enrichments and opportunities for students. But even beyond that, these enrollment imbalances are looking pretty stark, as well as the facilities challenges that they produce. And in particular, you know, another one, too, is just in terms of the new development coming in, even beyond our existing population imbalance, when we have new development coming in, I'm really hoping that we are talking and working with the city and Portland Development Commission, whoever else it might be, to figure out, how are we gonna meet that challenge?
You raised a couple important issues, though, because we're, Lincoln's actually, you know, grown in enrollment, so we're over fifteen-hundred. And the high school we designed said the magic number to offer a full program was thirteen-fifty. You know, I'm just coming with cutting and cutting. I think thirteen-fifty was a pre-four or five years of budget cuts number. I don't see how you can offer a robust program, really, with fewer than sixteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred students. And so I think we really need to revisit that, how, because our high schools are spread so thin right now, you know, that we're gonna rebuild schools and maybe not have any program in them if we don't take a look at that magic number again. It would be very hard at thirteen-fifty, I think impossible, to maintain a full IB program, meet state graduation requirements, and offer supports that are needed for kids. And, you know, that's a real issue. So you mentioned fundraising, too, and it's interesting, because when I was looking at the book here, and they give the budget numbers, Lincoln, Grant, and Cleveland, who have the largest foundations, are budget-ranked number eight, nine, and ten of our ten high schools. So even with all the money we raise, we are under, the least resourced per student, and that's challenging. And I support equity, and there are lots of ways that equity is built into the system. So we have the socioeconomic status, we have the, under traditionally, historically underserved, we have the add-backs to support programs that were in danger of not surviving. The grants that are given, whether it's Gates Grants or Meyer Memorial Trust or SIG Grant, a hundred percent stays with the schools, because it should. And when we fundraise with foundations, we want to give away, you know, a third of that. And I will just say, as proof of that, when I got to Lincoln, it was kind of a secret that a third was given away, because they thought that would deter parents from giving, and in the worst economy ever, and a very, very, very transparent, not only are you going to be able to give to Lincoln, but a third of it will go to equity grants where kids in schools who don't even have thirty minutes of safe and supervised play will get a chance to have that. And we've gone from two-hundred thousand to five-hundred thousand in the last three years in using transparency. And I will say, though, that with another one point two cuts, that would be six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand to raise, and I can't even say that in a public school setting anymore, wouldn't have any integrity. These are public school families. Only thirty percent of Lincoln Cluster families can afford to give. We're shaming seventy percent when we're asking all parents to give five-hundred to a thousand dollars per child to maintain these kinds of programs. So it really is a difficult position to be in, and those grants go away every year, and you start fundraising again. It's not a three-year grant that you work with. So it's, I want to kind of break the myth that the Lincoln Cluster has all this extra money, because we still have very low budget rankings, and a third goes to equity grants, and that's hard to compete with large other grants.
So along the lines of number of students and the type of programming you can offer, we have two schools, at least in this cluster, that are really small, MLC, right, that's smaller than Chapman Elementary, and you have K-12.
Yeah, we are K-12, yes.
Right. And then I think of Skyline, who has ninety middle school, school students. And as we've entered into enrollment balancing, we've said, "This is just unsustainable." We just heard principal of Lincoln say, "I need more." Sixteen-hundred, eighteen-hundred is bigger. How do you, how can you offer the programming that we need? And is that something we need to look at, as whether or not it's a sustainable, sustainable practice? And a quick question for MLC, we didn't get information about your graduation rate, but you said it's declined. Can you share that with us? Like, where were you and where are you now?
So when they started recording the graduation rate in oh-nine-ten, we were a four-year cohort, that was the first year that it came out of the pilot, we were at about seventy-eight percent. And for last school year, eleven-twelve, was it eleven-twelve? Eleven-twelve, we were at sixty-six percent. So we've seen an excess of ten percent in our graduation rate. We do work on slim, we have a very lean program, and we have one teacher for every grade level, with the exception of middle school, where we can spread out a little bit so that there's content area. For the high school, we have five teachers that work at the high school, and they all have multiple endorsements. So our science teacher, for example, has an endorsement in biology, she has an endorsement in integrated science, she has an endorsement, I believe, in health. Our two English teachers, one of our English teacher has an endorsement for English, but also for French and Spanish. And then our other English teacher has an endorsement for English as well as art. And so from the high school standpoint, we offer our electives through art, because we do murals and we do studio art with different art that we offer with our English teacher. And then we also offer various other classes, like pedestrian walking as electives. So it's not as robust as you would find at other schools, but it connects with the fact that we're trying to be, trying to have experiential learning, where an experience is connecting with the content. And I couldn't say that we're not sustainable. I think that we are, and it's just a matter of how you want to look at sustaining that. But I think we offer a service to students that, for being theirselves, like being able to be open with who they are, that we really do provide a very safe environment for them. And we provide a safe environment for students having mental health issues. So I think that we encompass a lot of what students need for their moment in time.
I think the sustainability at Skyline is a struggle... I think the sustainability at Skyline is a struggle with the middle-years program. Obviously, you've heard from other clusters that the K-8 model has strong assets as far as being able to really know kids and limit those transitions. Before the last two years working in K-8s, I was a lifelong middle school educator and really enjoyed that and really felt that that was a powerful place. Last couple of years working in a K-8, really getting to see the differences in what you can offer as far as being able to really know that student and really slow down that maturation process at a much more reasonable rate. But you give up a lot as well. You give up a lot as far as program and access to electives. You know, that time in a student's life is really about trying as many different things as possible and seeing what sticks and what resonates. And unfortunately, we're not able to do that. We, you know, just like as Macari's talking, I'm laughing to myself because I have multiple teachers that have multiple endorsements. However, you know, I'm having to cut one of those who teaches drama, math, and language arts. And to be able to offer multiple languages, when I look at what West Sylvan, East Sylvan's able to offer their students to then line up to Lincoln is not something that we can compete with. I lose students every year because they're just ready for a bigger, more challenging environment, you know, the same kids that they've been with all the way throughout. With that, I also have parents and families who are very passionate about being able to stay there and the experiences that they're able to have and have that K-8. So, it really is a struggle. The enrollment and transfer process is difficult for us on both ends. We have about 20% of our population comes from families in North Portland. And they add a richness and a real dynamic to our community that is important. And however, you know, we're limiting that. And I, you know, I question the impact on the schools they're coming from by them coming up to us. And yet, West Sylvan has 15 slots available at sixth grade every year, and we just filled half of those. So, you know, I lost 10, I lost almost a third of my sixth grade class next year to West Sylvan because of what they can offer. And I've spent extensive time talking to the parents about what that's about and why that's happening. And bottom line is, you know, kids are just ready for a bigger environment and a bigger chance. So, it's a struggle on both ends. I think it's a beautiful program that meets the needs of kids in a really neat way, but it also, I fear, like Peyton's talked about, what are we leaving out? And I really, I really encourage you to look at enrollment and balancing and looking more creatively about reaching across the river and what that might look like for us in the future.
While you have the mic, could I just ask you a question? You talked about stability in your staffing and that being an issue. Can you just talk about what are the factors in that? What's affecting your, hanging on to your staff?
A couple of different things. One is, you know, the enrollment kind of bumping up and down. So, we dropped about 19. And so, we lost 1.3 out of a staff of 13 because of that enrollment drop and then the change in the ratio. And we're not quite, not quite enough, have a high enough underserved population. So, we are not receiving any extra back for that, although, you know, we're working with Sasha and the folks to see what that looks like. But when you have a small enough program like that to offer two different math tracks at middle school, when we only have one section to start with, makes it difficult to sustain that going forward. And, you know, we do blends throughout our K-5 program in order to make the numbers work, but then we need to do grade level when it comes to math. And so, when those numbers don't match up, I currently have a fifth grade math class at 39, which is not sustainable or best practice either. And then, when we, every once in a while, we have openings or we have variability. If we get placements, things like that, then that really is challenging to survive from, you know, multiple, many of the subjects that are taught, they will teach that same subject for three years straight. So, if, if there's any variability in the quality of that educator, those students experience that for three years instead of one. And there's no other option of where to go if it's not a good match for that student.
Thank you.
My last question, it looks like other folks are also out of questions. I had a question because I think of someplace like Chapman, not Peyton Chapman, Chapman Elementary. I think of Chapman where I used to work at a nonprofit nearby, and there was just such a stark difference. When we talk about diversity in socioeconomic status, there's a really wide gap. You have some, as you pointed out, some folks who are homeless and then some folks who are doing just fine. And I know that that's a common theme through many of these schools, some of these schools. And I'm curious, in fact, it was referenced at East West Sylvan about how challenging to provide the support because you don't get that extra FTE. And so, I think some people think, "Well, you know, do you need four languages? Can you drop one of those and provide?" Can you talk us through about some of the workarounds that you do to make that? Because I've been to five out of your eight schools, and I'm going to get the next three by the end of the year. But I just know that you're very creative in it, and I think it's important for us to hear how you make that work to get those supports because none of you throw away any one of your kids.
So, historically, at Chapman, we've been, a huge portion of our, of our jobs has been to fundraise. So, with our Title X students, our students who are considered homeless, we have, over a period of years, had a group of parents who supported a home tour. And that home tour was really popular, became popular nationwide. It was called the Street of Ames. And with that home tour, we were able to bank through, through the program, Project Returns, bank hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that is not connected. I don't have, my fingers can't touch that money. And so, that was one way that we were able to support the students who are considered homeless. We had an after-school program. The folks who ran that fundraising and that, the Street of Ames tour, felt like their time had come to an end and they chose to, to end the tour. But we wanted to figure out a way to continue the program and to hang on to the money that was, had been banked as long as possible because we fund an outreach coordinator with that fund, with those funds, and also an after-school program. So, we have, we have partnered with Friendly House, who is a neighborhood community center. They do a lot of our after-school care. And because of the students that we have, they were able to write grants. And we moved our program from Chapman, physically, after-school on Chapman, over to Friendly House. They were able to write grants, get the funding. And now, it's a sustainable program without us having to spend as much of our, our funds down. So, those kids, we work really hard at integrating them into the community as much as possible so that they don't stick out. We provide them with wraparound services, food, clothing. We help them with housing assistance, scholarships for after-school sports, uniforms, all of that kind of stuff. So, we've just been really creative with fundraising. I feel like my position has been, my position and others that I work with has been, a huge percentage of my time is spent creatively asking for money.
Can I explain that foreign language thing since we have six foreign language tracks? But our German teacher, for example, teaches two IB English classes or ninth grade English classes, depending on the year. And then he teaches, you know, 34 kids in German 1, 2, and 36 in German 3, 4, and then another 30 in 5, 6. And then we've combined 7, 8 with 9, 10 so that we hit 30 there. So, he basically has five or six different preps in the day, and he has 180 kids. And that's how we protect or preserve German. So, if we said, "Okay, we'll take the German kids and make them take Spanish, Spanish for all." Now, we're just going to have them in 30, they have to go somewhere. These kids need a class, either English or German. We just switched the German ones to Spanish. We haven't saved any FTE. Now, we just have to go out and hire a Spanish teacher. So, there's, there's no creative way to, beyond what we're doing, to cut a foreign language and not get them in a different foreign language. You don't save any FTE.
Any other comments, questions? Nope. Great. I want to thank everybody. We know how hard you work every day under very challenging circumstances. Thank you for your tireless efforts. And before you all leave, I want to invite the principals, assistant principals, vice principals, and the regional administrators up in front of the dais with us so we can take a photo. The board's going to take a five-minute recess.
I'm going to call the Board of Education back to order. This evening, we have our auditor, Richard Tracy, with us this evening. And he's going to present to us his audit report that we requested of him on school improvement plans. Mr. Tracy, thank you for coming to the speaker's table to provide your report. And we will turn it over to you to walk us through your findings and-
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's a pleasure to be here. I don't know if this is going to be on, but we might get that up.
Hopefully, we'll get some tech support to have that.
There we go.
Perfect.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again to present my report on school improvement plans. This, this report had four major objectives, as indicated here. First of all, I wanted to get a sense of what actually the requirements were for preparing school improvement plans. And then to see the degree which we actually follow those requirements. And then to get an assessment by talking to management and school principals about the importance and value of school improvement plans from their perspective. And then, if possible, identify any opportunities to prove the value or to add more benefit to school improvement plans. So, those are the four objectives that I had. In terms of the state requirements of what we have to do in Oregon, Oregon schools and districts have to prepare what they call continuous improvement plans. These plans are supposed to be reported publicly and should be available as a public record. Districts, school districts are now required to report this continuous improvement in a certain format. Unfortunately, it's a mouthful, but customized planning process tool is a new format that the Oregon Department of Education has developed. In Appendix B in your full report, you can actually see a kind of a graphic of what that process is. Priority and focus schools are required to use this plan in addition to districts. But all of the other schools are not required to use this plan at this point and use a template that we have devised. But that is pretty discretionary in terms of what districts require of their individual schools. So, unless you're a focus or priority school, there's quite a bit of discretion in terms of the format and content of these school improvement plans. At the, at the federal level, for federal requirements, there are any number of requirements in the federal ESA requirements for plans. A lot of plans are required through Title I. Other plans are required through ELL and SPED and TAG. With the federal waiver, as you all know, in the identification of these focus and priority schools, there are now 12 schools that are required to use this new comprehensive achievement, CPPT, in developing their improvement plans. Other Title I schools, I've been told by the Oregon Department of Education, may be required to do that in the future. So, it's, there's, it's a little bit of a moving target right now in terms of what's required both by state and federal government. In terms of the actual audit results, here in our district, every, every school does in fact prepare a school improvement plan as required by state and federal requirements. All of these plans are available. They can be reviewed by anybody who wants. They're a public record, a public document, and they are complete in terms of what we require as far as our template goes. And they are complete in other requirements as well. So, these, the focus and priority schools and their improvement grant schools have a different process, but they're all available and completed in terms of what the requirements require. Appendix C in your full report also has kind of an overview, actually, the actual document that we use now, the template we use now for school improvement plans, which I'm sure all of you have seen over the years. As far as the support for the preparation of school improvement plans and talking to executive management, talking to mid-management, regional administrators, then talking to some principals, the support for doing these things is quite mixed. At the executive level, it's viewed as a very strong accountability tool. It's viewed by the superintendent as a real lever for getting student achievement and highly supportive of that process. At the regional administrator level, there's also quite a bit of support, both in terms of it's being a major tool for assessing schools, for engaging the community. But there's also some views that it's not been as stable. It's been changeable. It's not used consistently throughout the district. At the principal level, again, there's quite a bit of support for the concept and notion of school improvement. But the actual template in the process we're using here has, many of the principal view it as a catchall for all of the other compliance requirements that have come down the pike. So, it's not as viewed as, as highly as I would say as management and mid-management do. The principals, I had more conversations with principals, and most of these comments are based on my interviews. So, there, there could be principals that I have not interviewed that may not agree with this. But generally, most principals that I talk to don't believe it's an integral part of school management and improvement. They view it as a valuable process, but it's not a living document. And that's probably the most common observation that I heard from most principals. It's not a living document for them on a daily, monthly, quarterly basis in terms of school improvement. Many of the principals had said the same, very same things about its weakness. It lacks a clear purpose. It has been viewed as both a tool for community engagement. It's been viewed as a tool for documenting professional development. It's been used as a tool for other kinds of purposes. But most principals that I talk to feel its central focus should be all about improving student achievement and focusing on student learning. But it has too many other compliance aspects to it that diffuse its, I guess, value and impact. There's a number of suggested changes that many of the principals had, but I think that can be grouped in several ways. One is it to make the focus a little more on teaching and learning issues and less on some of the other important issues, but not as important as they view that particular issue. They think it should be streamlined, and by streamlined, I think it means shorter and more to the point in terms of teaching and learning. And they also desire more supervisor input on that process from getting to end. The, most of the principals I also talked to found there was limited review and monitoring by management. When I talk to administrators, they all review the plans. They all get the plans from their principals. They know they exist. They know they're there. They're nowhere, they know they're in a format that is required. But these rules are not always consistently and uniformly performed. And probably the bigger weakness is the actual follow-up and the monitoring of the plans as it goes through the year and at the end of the year. So, they're, it's heavy at the front end and probably weak at the, at the end of the year or at the end- of the year or at the end of the two-year process of a school improvement plan. There are now written guidelines at this point for how supervisors review and monitor school improvement plans as well. One of the problems with the school improvement plan process, really frankly, are the changing state and federal requirements for these plans and then the number of plans that are required based on the various kinds of programs that federal government and the state is monitoring and managing. There are different, as we just talked earlier, there are different plans. There's a Title I schools, focus and priority schools, and then there are all the other schools, and there are two very different kinds of processes. Federal government also requires other plans that are not yet aligned into the school improvement plan process, although the State Department of Education indicates they want to get those plans aligned so there's fewer and that they can be more coordinated that I don't believe has happened yet. The CPPT process has been initially technical, challenging, kind of complicated, difficult, I would say, for all schools in our district to do without significant simplification of the process. The Oregon Department of Education has simplified the number of indicators that are in the CPPT. More changes may be coming, so I think it's, that, that process is still changeable at this particular time. As far as I know, the achievement compact indicators, as they're going to be developed, are also not part of the CPPT process yet, but they also indicate that that's something that will happen. So we have a, an improvement plan process at the state level that is changing, that's evolving, so it's difficult to make recommendations about what we should do in our own system here. What I tried to do is make recommendations to look at what we're doing now. One of the options would be actually just to adopt the CPT process for the next year or the year after that. It has some real advantages because it's web-based, it's interactive, you can keep ongoing updates, and you've got the information there available. It's not static like some of the templates that we have been using for school improvement plans. So I think that has some real advantages, but it is complicated, it's technical, it has, training is needed to know how to use it. We could simply revise our current template to respond to some of the needs for simplification, some of the needs for more streamlining and focus on student achievement, that's a possibility. We could also, could just retain our template and analyze the feasibility of using that CPPT process in the coming years. So we have some options of how we go forward. It's difficult to say which is the best one at this particular time. I also indicated that we could think about changing the timeframes for preparing and submitting school improvement plans. They happen oftentimes at the front part of the year. Many principals find that it's very difficult with all the other things they have to do during the beginning of the year to actually get the school improvement plans completed, issued, and available. Sometimes the data's not quite available for them to, to do that as well, so there's some timing issues. Moving to a two-year timeframe has been viewed very valuable by all the principals that I talked to. It could even perhaps be a three-year plan rather than just a two-year plan as well that could be considered. And also, I recommended establishing some, some written guidelines for the supervisor review and approval and monitoring of the plans. In the response from Superintendent Smith, there's already underway a lot of action in the response to these recommendations. In particular, there's some assessment going on right now of whether we should adopt CPPT, whether it's practical, whether it's realistic at this point to adopt it, given its evolving nature, and whether all of our schools could do it. So that assessment's going on now, as I understand from Superintendent Smith's response. Also, there's some written guidelines for supervisor review and how that will be done is being developed, and also in terms of how that will be used in principal evaluations is also undergoing some process review and figuring out how that would be done as well. So there are action on many of these recommendations right now. And that's the end of my presentation. Again, as usual, this report is on the website for anybody who would like to review it, and so I'm open to any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Questions, thoughts, comments?
I was just gonna ask, I think, thank you first of all. I think there were some folks on the board who felt very strongly about doing this particular audit, and I'd love to hear from those board members first maybe about what the thought was and whether this was helpful or not.
I mean, being one of those that kinda pushed for this, having read, you know, for a number of years the, the school improvement plans for all the schools, what I noticed was that, that the discrepancies in regards to the, the different reports that were done, there was not, no real consistency, you know, initially, I think, in regards to those reports, and there was also some things that were missing that we were saying that we're gonna be incorporating into the, into the school improvement plans that haven't showed up in, at least in all the schools. And so for me, there was a major concern in regards to, you know, how are we, are really doing that, given that also, you know, having been in the, um, initial, you know, like the, the, the school side council and, and, and at that, at one point, I mean, there was a, an attempt to try to include more of the side councils trying in the preparation of those, of those things. I didn't see that showing up really well, and I know the, the, um, CPPS, you know, one of the community organizations, um, Community and Parents Program of Public Schools, that was, this was one of their major things at, at some point in regards to trying to get more like the side councils working. I wanted to see what, what you also found, and, and again, I mean, it's, it's not, um, what I, what I gather from this is, is the, you know, the different perceptions that people have, and, and we've seen that in regards to the usefulness. I think we saw that, you know, with your audit with the, um, in, in the ESL department in regards to, you know, everybody putting it on somebody else. Not as much as, in, in terms of this, but I think that there's also differences in, in regards to understanding how useful these two might be, and, and so for me, I think it is very, is very good in that way. And then, again, your recommendations in regards to what, what are we gonna, in essence, not, you know, require, but also ask people to do on a more consistent basis if we are trying to really look at building accountability into the system throughout the system.
Well, one of the things in response, thank you for your comments, one of the things that I heard from several principals was that, um, there's a, an opportunity to make this school improvement plan uniquely useful for the school that is preparing it, and so much of the time, the template and requirements are more standardized, and so it's less useful for a school that may have different problems than another school. So the opportunity to have some sort of unique focus in that plan is important. Obviously, there's a downside to that as well, is that you don't in fact have some standardization where you can point to certain things you want to see done, and those, every school should do that. So whether you, it's a compliance tool or whether it's an improvement tool, I think that's an important thing to think about, and it may be a little bit of both and not, not enough of either right now to be as valuable to principals, it sounds like.
That's it. But I guess for me, the consistency lied in, in regards to if we have this racial educational equity policy in place in particular, and, and we're saying that we're trying to close the achievement gap, that I want to be able to see that reflected in regards of their data and how we're gonna be addressing it in the particular schools. How they address it might be the variance, but that they address it is, is not, it shouldn't be a variance.
I agree.
I guess I'm one of the other ones, folks who really wanted to see this and really to shine the light on it, so I really appreciate this. I mean, for me, it's, you know, do we want this to be a living document or not? I mean, we should not be putting principals and staff and side councils through this exercise in compliance unless we're actually gonna have it be a living document. So I really appreciate your highlighting the concerns and weaknesses. Of course, a huge issue is we've got this overlay of the state, and they don't have a great track record for providing useful, meaningful tools, right, and ones that don't actually just create more work. So that's a really, really tough one for us to try to navigate. I appreciate that you laid out kind of the, that there is not necessarily a clear answer, but, you know, the piloting or the, trying to figure out some way to work within the overlay that the state is imposing and still make it work in a way that actually helps our schools. And the, the other thing I would add is just there's also the piece that I'm not sure I saw so much mention here of just in terms of parent and community transparency and involvement for parents and, parents and community members to either be involved in crafting it or have access to it. And again, that piece of whether or not it's actually a living document that's meaningful and accessible and that you can have, that, that has any reality and within schools as a tool for understanding and improving the school. So it's just a huge, huge gap there. And again, it really is that balance of, I mean, there's so many pieces when I look through this template, I think it's definitely improved compared to previous years where it was just completely, you know, just like cell after cell after cell. This at least is, is, you can understand why the pieces are in here and they're important pieces, and, and, but figuring out that balance of, okay, is there a way to make sure we have accountability for racial equity work in every school building without forcing principals to spend hours filling out lists of things, or, you know? So I could see some kind of middle ground where there's, it's streamlined, maybe extend the timeline, do the change, but we still have that level of, to me, there needs to be some of that account, standard accountability district-wide and transparency for what's happening or not happening in each school. And then the last one, of course, is that it, we've gotta be tying it to principal evaluations, and I appreciate that we've got something underway. I definitely wanna hear more about the timeframe for that and hear back, you know, a progress report as you usually do on your audits in terms of how are we doing, because again, I mean, if there's individual schools where it's being used within that community as a living document, that's great, but I think until we really have the regional administrators referring back to it, commenting on it, and then using it, then it's not gonna be a living document in the, in the way it really needs to be.
Did you get enough what you needed to talk into this?
I was on a site council years ago, years and years ago, and it was a completely unsatisfying experience as a parent. And I guess I wanted to understand whether our, our site council's still made up to include parents, and if so, did you, did you include parents in your evaluation?
I, I did not interview any parents. The, the template, as you can say, as you can see, has identified community members and parents that are part of the process. The degree they're part of the process, I think, I think varies quite a bit depending on the school. I think at some, some, some schools, there's quite a bit of community and parent input, and in other schools, it's probably driven largely by the principal. That seems to be a, a variation in terms of how much parents are involved in the process.
Do you have a sense in terms of our principals, how much the parent voice is heard or valued or considered when site councils are, I mean, you got the school improvement plans?
I think it's variable, school to school, as it always has been. So, I mean, I think that specific question, it varies school to school. Some places you have really robust site councils and others still not. What I wanted to actually be able to do is see whether or not any of, this has been a, actually, numbers of the themes you identified in the audit have been things that Sue Ann and the, the regional administrators have been working on pretty deeply, both trying to make it a tool that is useful to schools, not like a compliance exercise, and have also been deeply engaged in the use of the CPPT this year with the focus and priority schools and trying to make some sense of whether it is a tool that would be useful for all schools to use, both in terms of, it's a continuous improvement tool, so it's not just a static document which addresses some of the, can you make it be something that is more useful as an ongoing, you know, living document?
Right.
And also the, when you have data available. And they've been working on a strategic, like a framework for successful schools that is also driving what are we looking for in every school and what are the conversations you have with principals that are the, what do we hold in common at a high level, that then assumes some level of what's happening at a school level is gonna look different school to school, but I don't know if any of you guys wanna make any comments about this process or how it's showing up at individual schools while we have.
Mr. Lopez, she happens to be looking this direction, but you're included in that just cause.
Oh, Antonio. He was really the one that wanted to come on up. I know. Antonio.
You don't have to, I just noticed you were over there.
That's a call out.
Nice job.
Good evening. I just wanna thank Mr. Tracy for the audit and also just for, I think he captured quite well both what the strengths of our current process are and what its weaknesses are. And we were already engaged pretty deeply in figuring out how best can a school improvement plan, which we are required to do, serve the broadest purposes. We want compliance way less than we want accelerated achievement, and so how might a document around which we ask for compliance in terms of, you know, when it's due and what it does, how could that propel achievement in our schools? And so, so the regional administrators have been working over the course of the year in their supervision of principals in looking at sort of what do we know are the game changer pieces in schools, and our school improvement plan template already monitors a number of those. So it asks the principal and the site council and the data team in the school, so those are all parties to the SIP plan when it's submitted. They're all asked to share, so what's the professional development plan for the year? What are the specific milestones, goals for the school for the year? What are the instructional practices that will target those milestones, growth? What is the plan, the professional development plan related to our racial educational equity work? So, so some of the critical components that we know we need in our schools are in the plan. And as Mr. Tracy noted, I think that there really is a pretty broad continuum, principals that would really, they would make their own school improvement plan if we weren't asking for one, and others who, who see it as a chore and, and for whom the development of it or the use of it is, is less robust probably. And so, so that's why we are working on, we don't just wanna say, hey, here's a template and here's when we want it back. We have, over the last two years, implemented written responses to principals, both from the regional administrator of that school as well as from Cynthia MacLeod, who's our Assistant Director of Equity Professional Development around the equity plans. She's done some targeted responses as well, and we've developed larger district-wide professional development based on what we've gleaned from school improvement plan proposals. But, but we're not there yet, and one of the things that's been helpful this year is that our focus and priority schools have had the opportunity to pilot the CPPT tool, also known as Indy Star, which is the brand name. Greg, would you like to speak to it a little bit? Greg has worked most directly with our focus and priority schools using that tool.
Our schools, our 12 focus and priority schools learned about this tool last August for the first time, and they've been working with it ever since, and we've been working really closely with them in that process, both to help them with it and to also to learn about it and see what its implications might be for other schools in our district. In the August, we all, the RAs and some of the folks from teaching and learning went to the training that the principals received, and in the fall, we looked at the feedback they got from their self-assessment process. The, in this winter, each of the schools had feedback coming to them from ODE appraisal teams that we set in on those experiences with them. We've been at our cabinet meetings each month, we've been looking at the tool, the indicators within the tool and looking to see if they're applicable to our work in Portland and playing with some of the wording ourselves. The schools have plans due May 1st, which is really, they've been working within the tool, and they need to have it as current as possible on May 1st so that we can begin looking at it, as will ODE, to see what it looks like to date. And so we'll be looking at the plans that emerge and then talking with their principals this summer about their experiences using the tool. We're really looking to see whether or not it's aligned with our milestone and equity work, and then secondly, whether it's really a manageable piece. As the auditor said, it started out with over 200 indicators, and that's been pared down to 34 right now, making it much more manageable. down to 34 right now, making it much more manageable for all people to use. But it is requiring schools to have support from ODE to use the tool in terms of releasing staff and time to work with families and so forth on it. Something that we may not have available to all of our schools as opposed to our Title One schools and SPF schools. On the other hand, as was mentioned here, the encouraging part is that it's something you work in constantly. It's not something you visit once a year or even quarterly. Whenever you do your work around your school improvement, you do it within the tool. You know what your progress is, you know your milestones, you put your data in. And so, it really changes what we think of as a school improvement plan to an ongoing process. We've talked about that for years, this is really doing that. And so, it would become ideally part of the culture of the school to use this tool. And so, we're balancing the viability of it in terms of practice with its alignment to our work. And also, as we said, it is evolving. And so, we'll see how, after ODE's gone through one year with it, if it's really evolved to a point that it has applicability for all of our schools.
So, can I ask some other regional administrators, all of whom have been principals and have been through this process, other iterations, this iteration? One, what, what keeps you from visiting it regularly when you visit your, your principals? Two, as a principal, what did you find beneficial or not beneficial? Because we all know that there are things in our jobs, right, that are just compliance, it's something I got to do, but it doesn't really help me get my work. So, I'd be curious to hear from your perspective or what you're hearing from your principals and what, how does this tool make your job easier and how do we use it as a lever to accountability? Because if we don't, aside from state law, what's the use of it?
I can add, as we're passing the microphone out, that each of us meet quarterly with our principals and go over the contents of the plan, focusing on equity, milestones, discipline, quality of instruction, and parent engagement. So, that is on, one expectation we have for ourselves.
Can I, can I ask our auditor, that, that, what Greg just said didn't resonate with what I thought your findings were, is that it was inconsistent, that it was not regularly quarterly reviewed with principals?
I, I didn't hear that it was consistently done.
Okay, thank you. That's, I get that it's the expectation, I'm just trying to get to the...
So, and I think the, the part that gets a little confusing, we may not pull out the document as a whole, the school improvement plan, but if I'm meeting monthly with my principals that I supervise and I'm asking them about their student achievement, I'm asking them about their equity, I'm asking about their family engagement, I'm asking about their discipline and how it relates to students by race and are we showing disproportionate discipline in that area? Now, I'm asking about their teaching engagement, I'm hitting a majority of the points in that school improvement plan, even though we don't have the school improvement plan in the document that they have for me when I show up filled out. But when you combine the two, there's a lot of cross-section in both of them. I think one of the biggest challenges as, as a principal with the SIP and as when I was a principal, is that in SIP, you're trying to get your site council's approval, you're also trying to lay out your professional development plan and you're trying to gauge and judge those ahead of time for what may be happening and get those signed off. And the date's been a moving target, you know, it's been adjusted, it's been changed as to when it has to go and then the site council members are going offline and then we're asking for this in September or actually in the middle of summer and then September. So, those have been some of the biggest challenges, but I think they do fall more in line with each other as to what we develop this year and with the SIPs. And this, last year, in the school improvement plan, we asked for more of an update instead of going through and redoing the whole document again. And as we know, it's been changed a few times. And that was cumbersome as a principal, to get a whole new template, to start all over again or try and make it look like we're doing something really different instead of continuation on continued improvement. And I think as RAs, that's where we want to move to and that's where we should be moving to, which is a living document. We're going to build, we're going to build, we're going to grow, we're going to grow and work with this document and ask these questions. So, this is the third year for me out of the principalship and I never had someone coming and asking me those specific questions every single month about my school and the work I'm doing and the work that the staff is doing.
So, I, I won't follow up with a question about why you are meeting every month and you think that the expectation is quarterly. But I, how do we connect to say, yes, you're making pro, how, how do we use this as accountability, right? If you're, if you're meeting that and we're not pulling out the document to say, are you making that progress? I don't know what data we would be using to mark that progress because my guess is it's attached to some assessment that we don't, probably don't get.
You don't get in time, right.
Real time, right?
Right.
So, it begins to feel, I guess, to me, and sorry if I'm hogging the mic on this, but begins to feel like something that is set up for compliance, that we're trying to force into using as a lever for accountability when it can't be that based just even on when data comes out. And if that's the case, then I would rather have us next legislative session or something, work with our legislature to say, this isn't a tool that's working and it's creating busy work. And this is what principals and educators are spending their time on, rather than actually observing or spending their time in that. Is that a right read? And help me, help me figure out how we get that tool and that accountability if, if you're just going through a laundry list and we're not ever connecting it back to the document?
I think the connection, being that we're in the process of what I just spoke about, we haven't even finished implementing that because we started in October, November. So, I think it becomes connected when we get to June and I'm sitting down and reviewing all those meetings I had with my principals and then looking at the assessments. I am getting monthly assessments, what, where are you pulling your students out, would need help, you know, what are you doing, how are you monitoring those students on a regular basis, even though they may not be taken to OCS, you know, right away, but what are assessments are you using on a weekly, on a monthly basis for your students to make sure they are where they need to be and what kind of trainings that your staff had? So, from that standpoint, I think there is monitoring. I think that we will have the data, but we need to get through the system to be able to do it. Now, that's separate from the school improvement plan as a whole and what the expectation from school improvement plans were when they were created, that may be so, but I think we created what we did because we needed better feedback, understanding, and development. And I feel I've gotten that from the 19 people I supervise.
Did I see?
Can I add something?
Yeah, please. You can also move the mic closer to you.
Okay. I was here 10 years ago when the school improvement plan was this huge document that everyone was regretting it because it was about how thick it could be and how it has evolved into a, a more meaningful document where I find that with the new state improvement plan that we have for the Focus and the Priority, with the old school improvement plan was kind of at the end of the year summative kind of data. So, we will say, you know, this is the problem of practice and we say by the end of testing, OCS testing, certain percent of the students will, will be at this level. So, we had to wait until OCS testing to look at that data to compare it. So, it was one of those that you had to wait until you had your assessments in place in order to be able to compare whether or not you had done the progress. With this, the new tool that the state's putting together, what is really good that we find value is that you rank what is important. What is the most important thing that you're going to do? And then you have to put a time that you're going to monitor and what is the evidence. So, for example, a school can say, we're going to look at our ECCB, DIBELS data, which is a K3 data, and we're going to compare the fall and the winter data. That is something that you put a timeline that you can look in December and see what is the progress. So, it's going to be able to tell what is the data that you're going to be looking and the time that you can come back and revisit and see whether or not you make those gains. So, what I think the principal's going to like is that it helps them rank in terms of the priority. What are the things that they're going to monitor and what is the timeline? And this is something that we can come back and have that conversation with the principals. Like today, I was at Marysville and the way we look at the data, then the principal, Anna, came and presented the data with her data team. And they said, this is the, this is the progress that we made from fall to winter, this is where we're behind, this is what we need to do. We had the equity team that came in present and said, this is the work that we're doing in equity. So, I think that we're moving toward those systems in which we, it gives us the opportunity to monitor more consistently. In that way, like the old school improvement plan, wait until the OCS data, we'll get the OCS data to see whether or not we make the improvement. So, how can we develop those internal markers that keep us coming back and say, are you meeting this or meeting that and not at the end of the year?
Any other comments, suggestions, questions?
I'm curious where we go from here.
Yeah. We'll keep you posted on the CPPT thing and whether or not that really ends up feeling like it. And it is, I, I will just say the, the description of the 10-year-ago document, that was like a massive, like, document, like, the efforts have really been to streamline and try and make it something that is useful and really hitting the things that we're trying to, like, stay in touch with principals about what's moving in their school. Are we there yet? No, clearly you hear a whole lot, except I will say the thing I feel is moving is the conversation amongst the RAs and the CAO about, like, how are we really identifying the few things that we're saying are the conversations with principals? And you heard people really referencing those. And then what's the effective way to do a framework to, to guide the conversations and keep track of what's happening across our whole system? So, and thank you for the work you did on the audit. I think it reflects a lot of the conversations we're having, so helpful.
I just have a question for you about the CPPT and whether you're, you're having any conversations with ODE about what's a meaningful document? I know that they started out, I think you said with 200 indicators.
Oh, my goodness, it was way too much.
But even 30 indicators in a school is a whole lot of things that, you're not really going to move 30 things.
They've been in dialogue with our team about what's being useful and they've been actively streamlining. And we actually have the opportunity to do a district-wide, opportunity to do the district-wide application of the same tool, so. And they're, they're adapting as we go to and trying to make it a meaningful document or meaningful process.
So, you're hoping that maybe that document will be more streamlined?
We're hoping to pilot it and get, look at whether or not it can be the tool we use district-wide, but we're, we're using it with the schools actively that we're doing it with now, looking at, kind of seeing how more broadly it applies to the rest of our schools this spring, so.
I want to get back to the issue of parent engagement in the school improvement plan and I'm, I'm not hearing from anybody that parents are a big part of it, so I'd like to hear that. And specifically, we have family engagement coordinators at Portland Public Schools, we have community partners that are supposed to be helping with family engagement. I'm curious to know whether, whether they, whether PTAs, whether any parent involvement is really a part of these plans and, and how it is that we make that meaningful for a parent? Because again, it was, it was a miserable process for me. I would not have recommended to a parent to step onto a school improvement plan and that's really sad. So, I, is anything different today?
So, I can say a few things about that. I think, first of all, the Title One schools are required to have family engagement as a piece of their school improvement plan. And so, that piece has been, is for all schools. And the site council has to be half parents and half school staff. So, while, while you were there, Bobby, Director Regan, excuse me, it's true across, across the board, parents all over the district are on those teams. And I think that what the superintendent said earlier is exactly right. It's highly variable in terms of the quality and competency of those teams to accomplish the goals that are set out. And one of the things I was thinking when Antonio was speaking earlier is that the depth and complexity of the initiatives and the tasks is substantial now. And so, to take parents and train them in the language and the acronyms and the processes and all these, this knowledge is a formidable task and I think it's a important one and I think that's why it was designed, is that we have parent leadership on these teams. But I don't think it's easy and I think that's one of the reasons that the response has been variable. And so, I'm hopeful about a tighter link to assessment information because I think then that you get smaller loops and then it becomes more meaningful so that it doesn't get, get dust on the drawer. You know, you pull it out once a month and kind of dust it off and look at it. And I think if it's a tight assessment, then the rationale and the way to communicate it becomes much simpler and clearer. So, I hope that answers your question.
Sort of. Yeah, I guess one of my questions again is, especially at these Title One schools, I mean, are our community partners who we're hiring to help us with family engagement and our, our family engagement coordinators actively involved with our school improvement plans? If this is something that's supposed to help us move the dial?
They're, they're not necessarily part of that team, but their, their work may be directed by the effort of that team. So, the team may say, we feel that we need a higher, a stronger focus on community events that represent, you know, bilingual stuff. And so, then the people in the building are tasked with doing that, with that job. So, they're, they're in a director role in that, the team is then directs that work. So, I wouldn't say that they're often, the, the person who's executing the work is often on the team.
I mean, there is the whole page, the Parent and Family Involvement Plan. So, I mean, that goes through a number of specific pieces. Is that only for Title One schools or is that for every school?
It's required for Title One schools, but all schools have it now and we ask for it from everyone.
Okay. Because that talks about the plan being reviewed annually by representative group of parents, meetings to be held in accessible rooms, communications about the school improvement plan to be provided in major languages and so forth. So, there's a number of so. But again, if no one's ever checking that this happens.
I am sure we could go on, but we are ready for our next agenda item.
No, I, I was going to say that it needs to happen. It needs to happen whether it's, the school improvement plans that, that I did and the ones that I observed, they have parent engagement. What we need to make sure is that they truly engage in the development of the plan and they're just not a signature in the plan. So, I think that if the schools have not, then they need to make sure that, that they involve parents in that, in that development.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tracy, for your work.
Thank you.
We have one more audit coming up, is that correct?
Yes.
And we look forward to seeing that before the end of the year.
Great.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, regional administrators, for joining us for that conversation. I'm now going to recess the board from its regular meeting and convene as the Budget Committee. Now, we're the Budget Committee. The board will see the superintendent's budget message and propose 2013, 2014 budget on April 15th. Tonight, the board, acting as Budget Committee, will begin its discussion on the proposed budget, starting with the subject of district staffing. The board held its first public hearing on the proposed budget on April 18th and I again want to thank everybody that came out to testify. We appreciate your input. And we are going to hold an additional public hearing on the proposed budget on Wednesday, May 1st at 6:00 PM here in the Board Auditorium. We hope those of you who would like to speak will join us. Please remember to sign up in advance by calling the board office. With that, Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce our discussion?
I would, and I'm going to actually make a few comments, but I'll invite up to the, to the table Sue Ann Higgins, our Chief Academic Officer, Sarah Singer, who, her assistant, and David Wine, our Deputy CFO. Are you coming up or are you staying put for questions? Okay. So, what we're doing tonight is really taking you through some of the complexities of staffing and I want to back up a little bit to the broader budget message and the complexity of the overall message before we launch into then the real specifics and complexities of what that means when we start to staff, staff our schools. And this budget, we were really calling it out as marking a turning point in halting the erosion of our state school fund where we really had a, a larger investment this year in the state school fund. We had positive news in terms of what we're anticipating with the local arts tax. We talked about this as a turning point in the budget. We talked about this as a turning point in the budget, relative stability, halting of erosion, and at the same time, we had significant cuts and decline as a result of federal sequestration, as a result of a new census, and as a result of loss of, of significant grants, including our school improvement grant, including voluntary public school choice, including foreign language grants. So the complexity of this was, at the same time, our, our state school fund went up and gave us more resource in the general fund, part of what it did was give us the opportunity to strategically mitigate and offset losses on the other side. So while, and for the first time in six years as superintendent, we did not do layout, massive layoffs or significant like double-digit budget cuts. We have differential and variable impact at a school level. So part of what we're going to walk you through tonight is, is what the offsetting impacts were or are, and how we're then approaching those with individual schools. The other piece that I want to just put in your mind is the, so last year at this time, we were looking at laying off 110 teachers or 110 staff. We were able to not do that with a one-time, so I stress, one-time deal that was between the city, the district, and our teachers' association. What we did in this budget was both fill in that 110 that otherwise would have been a loss, so we were able to fill it in and go 66 staff above that in the general fund. Now you've got corresponding losses from the other. So some of what we're going to walk you through tonight is that. The other piece for you to hold in your mind is that we still have 48 FTE that we've held, that we've set aside, that are designed to allow us to then resolve problems or, you know, for schools, individual schools that are not able to either get unexpected enrollment or have problems that need to be solved in terms of their ability to offer core program. That is still in a pot that you don't see in the, in the allocations that you've seen school to school. So of the FTE that will be in schools, we are still holding 48 of those centrally. And, and part of the discussion right now with the regional administrators and principals is the timing on when those are released. Where do we have to hold on to them until the fall? Because we won't know enrollment differentials and we have to have the ability to respond quickly and resolve those problems. And where are we better off releasing those earlier? So that's just some of the dynamics of, of where we are. And part of tonight's effort is to really take you through and have you get some visuals that help you make sense of that as you're trying to understand what do you see in here on paper when you're looking at impact on individual schools.
And before I turn it over to staff, I just want to interrupt for a moment because Director Regan, Director Knowles, and myself have spent a couple of days down in Salem talking with our legislators. One, thanking them for their reinvestment of setting a number that for the first time in years actually increases the state's investment in education. And I just want to let folks know a couple of things. One, it is a proposed budget at the state at this point. It is not a guaranteed number. So we are budgeting at 675 and it is not something that is done. So I just want to remind folks that if the state legislature changes that number for one reason or another, we may be changing our budget forecast or proposal. The second piece is, I just want to highlight for folks to know that, one, our legislators are working actually really, really hard to figure out how to get us to this number, to 675. And I just want to highlight for folks that there are some in the building, some in the state capital, that believe that there are other opportunities for additional funding. Now again, they're working hard just to get it 675, but I do want to highlight that there are many, many levers that a state legislature has to, to work with between revenue and cost. And so I just wanted to set folks, and I said this before the budget came out, that we are saying this is a stable funding from the state. In fact, it's a slight increase. But I hope that our public looks at this and says, stable funding, which means high school schedules or our current, current set of, current place, isn't adequate, isn't okay. And that if, if you are feeling that, if you are feeling that this is something that still needs more work from the state level, I hope that you let your legislators know. Because like I said, they are well aware of the issues. We are communicating with them regularly about, about what's going on. And they're going to need the community's support to do, one, to get us to the number that, that they've set at 675, which is an ambitious number, and possibly get us ahead of that. So I apologize for interrupting you again for staff.
It's exactly the same, it's the same message, I think, that we've been working to communicate. I will also just say in, in conversations both before presenting the budget and subsequently, the, the hunger for and the knowledge of what it is we need to build back in order to really adequately serve our kids is so, every, it just lives everywhere in all of us in this community. Like we all know, we are not even coming close to what it is we want to provide for our kids. So even as we're messaging stability and we are, like I just can't say, we are not at a reinvestment budget yet. We are just barely at, at stability. And I've also had multiple conversations about the potential of going beyond the 6.75 number in Salem, which if in fact we do, then we end up putting that directly into our schools. So, okay, so with that, but, but I will say that's also where I hear confusion and surprise and shock and, oh my goodness, how can we be cutting one more time? Like people are just done with, yeah. So with that, we're going to walk you through the complexity of what we are now working with and with, with each one of our building leaders. So Sue Ann.
A month ago, we shared some of this work with you when it was in process. So the district staffing team, we did an update report with you a month ago about considerations that we were looking at. And then those considerations came to the superintendent and then staff, in combination with the work of the budget leadership team, took that work further. So to begin with, and both as Director Belial and the superintendent have mentioned, so there are a lot of pieces that lean on each other here. What we want to try to do is just quickly illuminate how those get us to, what are the FTE numbers for each of our buildings right now? So the three big budget components for how staffing shows up in schools is, relates to centrally allocated budgets, so what is and is not funded there, the title budget funding, and then school staffing. So we know that this year we have reductions in a number of grant and central budgets. So those include reductions in all of our title funds in ESL, in special education, and in other grant funds. And so we knew that any of those would put other program pieces at risk. So making strategic investments to retain those then also requires additional FTE, most of which was not in the general fund last year. So we'll walk you through what some of the specific ones are.
Can I just clarify, when, I think that sometimes when I see central, centrally allocated budgets?
Yes.
In my head, that inter, that comes to mean central office staff? But that's not what that is?
No.
So can you, can you identify central, what that, what you mean by that?
Right. So, so that would be budgets for everything from our utilities, all of our facilities work, the work in human resources, the work in teaching and learning. So, so it's both staff, but it's also our operational budgets for all of our schools. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Special education. Yeah. Special education and ESL are also centrally allocated.
Right. Yes. So as we shared previously, so the proposed budget for this current year started with an, an amount that was really concerning, was going to force 110 school-level layoffs. We had a $10 million one-time infusion. And so that would be the hold steady line going into next school year. Our starting budget for next year looks roughly the same as it did last year when you pulled that $10 million back out. However, thanks to the voters in Portland, there was an additional infusion of funds for arts education in grades K through five. And additionally, an approved state outlook for the state's education budget should add between $7 and $8 million to our budget if, in fact, they land where they hope to. So looking then again at that $7 to $8 million, so our hold steady line for this year would look like that. And we, again, we do have these adds for this year. The challenge is, and what feels like so, such a tight shoe right now for everyone, is that we had so many positions that were providing critical services for our schools that were on grant funds or funded through other state and federal dollars that have been cut, that backfilling those positions then ultimately draws our level of staffing down a little bit from this year. And we'll illuminate that some more. So the impact on individual schools, either for increased or reduced staffing resources could come in any of these forms. Enrollment shift, so a projection of more students or fewer students. Grants that were, that that school was operating on. The art teacher funding, which is an add for many of our schools, all of our schools with grades K through five. The equity allocation, as well as the title program reductions. So those are the five big factors in terms of what impacts individual schools. When you look, for instance, at enrollment shifts, an analysis of the current school year shows that some schools were over-projected. And when I use that term, I want to use it respectfully. I don't think there was a school in Portland Public Schools that felt that they had too many resources this year, nor have they for many years. And so when I say over-projected, what I mean is the number of students we staffed them for, in fact, did not arrive and attend school there this year. So to avoid disruption, it has been our habit not to take FTE in the general fund ratio allocations out of schools, even if students don't show up. So what we do instead is retain some set aside FTE in order to push additional staff out to the schools where growth is seen. But we have not, from the central FTE budget, pulled staff back. So, so that's one of the impacts in terms of enrollment shifts for this year, is recognizing that some schools did not realize the projected FTE. Additionally, some schools are projected to be down for next year. And so for those schools, the student count for staffing will be down overall. And of course, when the largest part of our FTE is allocated based on the number of students going to school, because that's the base amount that we provide core program with, so that's an impact for next year. Then when you add to that other reductions seen at the school level, so the federal funds were impacted in multiple ways. A census that suggested a 5% federal, in federal cut. Sequestration, which withdrew another 5%. And then the impact of that on our title funds, as well as special education's IDEA, the total impact there is a negative $2.5 million.
Can I, you may know this, you may not.
Yes.
Census impact, what, what is that?
Want to speak to that more?
Sure. So title funding is federally, they base it on just your demographics for the state. And Oregon has, you know, fewer, I guess, in relative proportion, higher poverty students in comparison to other states, and so we just took a hit from...
So it's the whole state in proportion to the federal government?
I believe it's the whole state. That's my, that is my understanding.
A couple of people nodding behind you.
Yeah. Correct. Yes. Then in terms of grants, we have grants that either expired this year, we have several of those, and other grants that are either challenged or look like they may be reduced for next year. And we've enumerated these on several occasions. They include the school improvement grant that sunset at the end of this year at Roosevelt High School, as well as the foreign language acquisition program or FLAP grants that we based some staffing for dual language immersion programs. The voluntary public school choice grant, which provided both staff and services across a number of schools, including high schools. Our small learning communities grant. And then currently, it's uncertain if our high school graduation initiative grant, which is a dropout prevention and school retention grant, whether or not it will be impacted. So it's listed here because we're uncertain. And additionally, the Perkins dollars federally are also in question.
Does the high school graduation initiative grant fund teachers?
It does not fund teachers, no.
So it's just a general reduction of a grant for support services?
Right.
Okay, so another factor that's going to impact schools differently is the equity allocation. And so the equity allocation is comprised sort of two parts. The first part is socioeconomic status, and then the, the second part is combined underserved. So if you kind of think about these as two separate pots of, of FTE. So in the K-5 middle school and K-8 system, if you are a school that is 30% or above free and reduced meal percentage, you will receive the socioeconomic status funding. And in the high school system, there is no floor. And for combined underserved, this is, this comprises four historically underserved racial groups, special education and ELL, as well as poverty again. And for schools that are, that have 45% combined underserved, they receive funding from this particular stream. So what this can mean is that there are some schools, and it's based on numbers of, of students in these categories, not, not necessarily percentages. So what this can mean is that there could be a school that has high numbers of both socio, of, of students who are eligible for free and reduced meal, and they could have, and at the same time, high numbers of combined underserved students. And they will receive additional funding as a result of this equity allocation. On the flip side, there are some schools that missed the cutoff by a couple percentage points for both of these categories, and they would receive no funding from this equity allocation. And in gen, and so the way this is divided up is the socioeconomic status is 4% of kind of all of our non-administrative or non-schoolwide support FTE. And then it's the same, it's 4% of our combined underserved of all the non-administrative FTE. And so when you add that up, that would be 8% equity allocation, and this year it was 5%. So what this really means, all this, all this mumbo jumbo really means is that we have slightly increased our equity allocation this year.
And additionally, we've increased it and been more intentional. So what we've not seen over the years that we've been providing a supplement for a concentration of students in poverty is the kind of accelerated results. And we know that our racial equity, our racial educational equity policy asks us to differentiate resources in order to alter the results that we get. And so these funds are intended to continue to acknowledge that the impacts of students living in poverty mean that there are additional challenges for those school, those students often in school, but to also identify that we need to move closer to the students that we have in the past not served as well and who have therefore had an opportunity and/or achievement gap. And so we'll speak to that a little bit.
Could I ask a quick question on that? So two quick questions on that. I think we were all interested in trying to do this kind of a shift at some levels. So what is the amount of money we're talking about when we switch from 5% to 8%? What's the dollar figure? And, and how did staff land either FTE or dollar figure? I don't care how you describe it to me.
Yeah, I think it's 47.
And how did we ultimately land at 8% versus 6% versus 10%? What drove that number?
So I think it's, he's going to look it up, but I think it's 47 FTE additional from...
That's right.
Is that right? Okay, good. So that would be, you know, for about $500,000 difference. And what drove, the second question was what drove, you know, why 8% versus? So this is, this is the, the ever-present tension here. So if you, you know, why not? So if you, you know, why not 10%? Let's just say that for an example.
Sure, I mean, I'm just wanting to understand what you-
Right, so when you, when you look at 10%, what, what we have, this is a, a tension between being able to offer core program for every school, because that is also about equity. And, but still, really wanting to, to direct resources in some of our schools that really need to get better results, right? And for all students. And so there's this tension here. And when we looked at 10%, it, I think, it, it just looked, it looks like it doesn't meet the ability for all of our schools to meet core program. So we, so if you split the difference, like, we were able to, when you look at the 8% number, and then you also look at our schools who are meeting core program now, we felt that this was a feasible number.
And the challenge is that with the set-asides that we have for balancing, schools right now, in their numbers, don't see all the FTE that they might ultimately have. So, so that's one of the challenges of why, again, it really feels very tight across the system, and typically does at this time of year.
So can I ask one more question? When you, when you take the 47 FTE, we also are allocating 20.25 FTE to support focus and priority schools. What was that number last year? And so that's 47 plus these 20, right? But what was that number last year of extra support?
The focus and priority designation didn't come until August. So we had already allocated the majority of our resources. We did provide a .5 FTE to our three priority schools. And, but we had expended all of our FTE. And so we did not have additional staffing resources at that time. And so, it was one of the pla-, many places where the offset in timing of the state's designation of those schools and our ability to budget towards trying to resource them thoughtfully was just off-step. So, that's why we were thoughtful about that in advance this year.
So what we're doing with this budget, which is why I think it's being felt so much across the district, is that we have 47 plus another basically 19 that we're setting aside then, that we didn't set aside last year, right? Well, you had 20 points-
Correct.
I think 47 are being redirected in schools that meet the 30% of above, right?
Including high schools.
Including high schools. So they're being pushed back into the system.
And those all show up in the formula.
They're being allocated differently than perhaps they were last year.
Okay. And then another 19 over last year that are just to the focus and priority. Okay, I'm just trying to understand where that-
But those all show up in the current staffing table allocation, yeah. So they're not being held back.
Right. Okay. And, but we do know that the board had some additional questions about high school allocation, so we wanted to walk through some of that more specifically as a system of schools. So two kind of big-picture questions. How does high school staffing fare this year in comparison to next? And what does this budget and staffing allocation do to support high schools? So, both of those pieces. So once again, the general fund for high schools' FTE this year mirrors the overall PPS numbers for the current school year. However, next year, we begin 168 fewer students for staffing, as well as the expiration of the one-time city agreement.
So this is just looking at high school?
Correct.
Because, right. If I'm looking at this, I think we're a growing enrollment district, but not at the high school.
Correct. And that's a really important point, because we, we are excited to see that we have larger and larger numbers coming into our lower grades. And so we are a district that is growing. And the upper grades, grades really eight through 12 currently are just sort of the end of the bubble of lower enrolled grades, just in terms of a, of a population dip. So, so, and that's not 168 fewer students for next year. It's a difference between the number of students we staff for next year and last, excuse me, the current year, as well as the number that we are projected to be down. So that's how you realize 168 fewer kids in the staffing. Then we took out of the overall general fund pot nine FTE to make certain that each of the high schools received one FTE that could be used in a targeted way, either to support their essential skills work and/or to support additional opportunities for their career-related learning.
So are those assumed to be classroom teachers who are actually teaching career technical education, these coordinator positions?
So those are over and above the coordinator positions. So they could, they could fill out the coordinator positions more and make them full-time, or they could use those for career-related elective position?
It's the discretion of the high school principal, how they use that.
So I'm sorry, I have a, I'm confused about the scaling on this, because it's not to scale. So how are we getting the, I'm just having confusion. It's not meant to-
Are you saying that the nine seems a really big add compared to that whole general staff?
Well, the whole general, so just, I mean, in terms of the scale, so good, good question, Ruth. I mean, Director Atkins. So, really, the zero, there is, the zero isn't the bottom there. Just imagine that it's sort of halfway up.
Okay.
Okay.
So the big bars actually would be going down to the floor.
Yeah.
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 It's because the, right, so there's not great scale in this, in this visual. Right.
Right, I mean, I just don't want to try to get the impression there was this hu-, I mean, anyway, okay, thank you.
No, seriously.
Yep. No, very fair question. Sorry. It's a limitation of the, the visual. We're trying to get bars big enough that we can put words in. So additionally, 5.25 of the 20.25 FTE for focus and priority schools go to our two high schools. And then additionally, we have 10 FTE allocated, but not yet expended, to support either enrollment shifts and/or core program needs for the high schools.
So just a couple of points on this that's, I think, important, is that if you look at the total FTE allocated for the current year to the high school system, it's 520. And if you look at just, if you just look at the ratio of students per adult in the building, regardless if it's a teacher or an administrator, you're looking at a 20.3 to 1 ratio this year. When all is said and done, and we've allocated those 10 additional FTE late, like, whenever we do that, we end up with a total of 527 FTE for next year. So the first point there is, there is an increase, I mean, a slight increase, but there is an increase in FTE allocated to the high school system in terms of general fund dollars. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, the ratio actually improves from this year to next year when you look at kind of student per adult. So I just think those are two really important points to note. So, I'll stop there.
Great. I just, I, I want to note for those folks that are joining us, both here and at home, that the 19.9 to 1, the 20 point, isn't, isn't a teacher to student ratio. Don't, that's not what we're saying we're funding it. And the second thing is, it would be helpful for me to understand that we're, we're drawing a distinction now between general fund and federal fund. And it'd be, I'd be curious to know, at the high school level, what did we lose in FTE at the federal? So we can find out whether we're building back proportionally on that number.
Great. That's our next slide.
Fantastic.
And I also wanted, would, is it all right to go back to these numbers for one second? So in the superintendent's message to the board and the community last week, I know my heart kind of jumped, happy jump. Because it sounded like we were making a, a big new investment in high schools. And in fact, it said that we would be investing 35 additional FTE to specifically support high schools above the general school staffing formula. So, I'm trying to understand what those 35 positions are, because even if you add these up, you have nine plus five to five plus 10 is 24.25. So where are the other?
Right, so we haven't gone through where all the rest are, and where about to, or-
Okay. And I guess I'm curious to know how many of those are actually teachers teaching kids? Would be my next question after that.
Yep, coming.
So just to, so, do you want to address this?
Yeah, so this gets back to your point. So, the slightly good news that I just gave you about our, our general fund dollars is unfortunately, I can't say the same thing about our high school situation when you look at grants and federal funding. So, we are down from the current state in comparison to next year.
So is that basically the Roosevelt School Improvement Grant?
Well, it's more than, it's more than just that. So yeah, Roosevelt is down, you know, 13 FTE from the School Improvement Grant. But there are other grants as well. There's things like the Small Learning Communities Grant. So that has a direct impact on our schools. It, yeah.
VPSC grant?
VPSC is, is, you know, minus 2.5 FTE. So it just kind of adds up across the system. So we lose almost, you know, 20 FTE to grants.
That's what I was going to ask, is how many, because we, on this graphic, all of a sudden, we lost the number of FTE.
Yeah, so it's-
That we lost.
Yeah, so it's 22.
22 total?
Yeah.
From federal?
It's grants and, I mean, it's grants and federal combined.
Is that 13 of those, 22 of Roosevelt?
Correct.
So when you take that impact, and then again, enrollment shifts at the high schools, you see why it feels very tight in a number of the high schools right now. In terms of the strategic additions to support high school graduation and program, the first new addition is 6.5 FTE for the Portland International Scholars Academy for newcomer English language learners. And so, 5.5 of that will be teachers. For blended learning, this new investment is three FTE that will be teachers. And those folks are focused on doing credit recovery for high school students. So, so this is very much a connected strategy and one that helps high schools stretch their capacity. Albeit, it does, it's not a teacher in three buildings. It's centrally located folks, so that schools have additional opportunity for students to do blended learning, to recover credit that they're missing.
And do you know, off the top of your head by chance, what adding three FTE there does to our capacity? Like, how many more kids will we serve by adding that three FTE?
So, so it will be more than 200 student seats per semester. And because those are rotating seats, so, so a seat is a student in an online course with a highly qualified teacher. And so, three FTE, we could serve as, you know, our simultaneous cap would be, of course, 180. But, but there may be, over the course of a term, more students than that, because they would not be simultaneous. So when a student finishes and they move on, they vacate a seat, so. In terms of Avid, we picked up previously grant-funded staff. And then in terms of summer scholars, the investment here that we're picking up from retiring grants, such as the Voluntary Public School Choice Grant and Title I, is $300,000. And so, I'm trying to remember. Karina, do you recall, in terms of student seats for, for summer scholars?
For summer scholars, there are 1,600 students, and they complete more than 20, between 25 and 2,600 courses.
So that one also is, is a support.
So there's two sections that are three weeks each. And there's, there's about 1,250 to 1,275 students that come, last year, that completed the first session and the second session. More than 800 of those students repeated. So when we take, so that, so it comes up to 1,600 students altogether and both either non-repeaters, who took either one course or both.
Is that a, so, summer scholars are centrally located at Benson, is that right?
Correct. And then moving on, looking at ratio FTE. Sarah, would you like to talk us through this one?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up a little bit of confusion around our formula and what is meant by ratio FTE. So, in this current year, we see a 20 point, 28.35 students to one FTE, ratio FTE. And next year, it goes to 30 to 1. So the question is, does this mean that there are actually fewer general fund FTE in our schools for next year? And the answer is no.
In our high schools specifically?
And this is about our high schools.
And that's with an exclamation point, I noticed.
So again, just to explain how our funding formula works, there's several components to the formula. The first component is what we called school-wide support. It used to be called admin table. And that makes up about 20% of the FTE that we allocate. So things that fall under school-wide support include the principal, counselor, campus monitor, IT, athletic director, bookkeeper, testing coordinator. There's a lot of different positions. And high schools, you know, tend to, on average, have more of these types of positions than our sort of K-8 system as a whole. And we also have, what we call the ratio FTE. And these FTE are allocated primarily by size. And the, the intended general use of these FTE are for teaching positions. And as I said, this is where we have, this is where the 28.35 to 1 ratio comes into play. So when we talk about that, that's really what we're talking about. We also have the, in our current form, we have the SES, and we have kind of non-formula. But I'm not, I'm going to spend time talking about the school-wide support and the ratio FTE and how these interplay with one another. So this is what our formula says, this is kind of what, what our formula allocates. But if you go to the next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about what happens sort of in reality, on the ground, in high schools. So typically, what we're finding, and what we have found for many years, is that schools actually aren't using 20% of their FTE for school-wide support. They're using more of their FTE for school-wide support that we allocate. So they're using approximately 24%. Now, this, this number's going to, you know, be variable across high schools, but we do see that this is what's happening on the ground. So our 28.35 ratio FTE wasn't actually sort of reflecting reality. So what, what schools are doing is, while they increase their school-wide support, they are simultaneously sort of decreasing the number of teachers that are on the ground. So, the 28.35 wasn't particularly accurate. And so what we've tried to do, if you go to the, the next slide, is really just increase the transparency in our formula. So once, when it says ratio FTE, we're really talking about teachers. And when it talks about school-wide support, or when it says school-wide support, we're talking about other, we're, we're trying to get clear about that these are positions that are in fact, non-teaching positions that are still critical to the success of our schools. But we're just trying to make that distinction a little bit clearer. So, in terms of the impact, in terms of the actual on-the-ground impact, you don't see an increase or decrease in terms of the number of teachers on the ground by making this change. This is just a, a technical change to the formula.
So we had given it an artificially low amount of staff in what was the admin table or in the school-wide support. What we tried to do here was move towards correcting that, having it better reflect the actual supports that it just takes to run a high school. And some of those are differentiated by the size of the school, such as the counseling FTE, and some are more generic.
So if I'm a principal, would I, would I experience this as, because we also have this process where you have to convert FTE from this to that? I don't know if this applies to that. But if I'm a principal, do I look at this and say? Because before I got to make the choice, right, I have this much FTE, and I'm going to use him as teachers, oh, it turns out I need additional support here. And so it's self-directed- gonna use them as teachers. Oh, it turns out I need additional support here. And so it's self-directed versus is this feeling more like it's centrally directed, saying, you never really used it that way anyway, and now you have to ask permission to convert it back to teachers versus campus-wide support? Could I experience this change that way?
Yes, at, at a certain level. The expectation is that we're trying to be explicit that, um, that the ratio FTE is intended for teachers in classrooms, um, to the degree possible. And also, in terms of our work to have a more equitable system, we want there to be additional supervision and support for principals to really analyze, um, how, how they're using their FTE. And to not have to keep dipping into teacher FTE in order to just do the minimum services for the school. So this, this takes a step towards that. I, I think we're, you know, we're still not, it's not a fixed thing and it would, would have to be in an investment budget to have a picture that was, you know, unilaterally, where both of those buckets felt adequately filled. We're not there yet.
That's, that's the biggest thing I was gonna say, is you hear big conversation that in the school-wide support, it's not enough to do what you need to do. Like, you've got, you've got really thin, um, allocations of staff to be library, counseling, bookkeeping, you know, administrative support, and, and huge conversation of not adequate. So.
Right.
I mean, same, same in the teaching, the whole thing, not enough. So. But this is a more accurate reflection of how FTE is being used and how do you look and see something comparable from school to school. So one of the things this does do, if somebody has moved, y- y- you may hear about like a school schedule and what doesn't work in one school that doesn't make sense to you. Why does it not work? Because it works over here? Because what you can't see is what somebody's done to do their school-wide support. And that's, that doesn't look like it's part of the equation. This is partly trying to give you, like, it gives you a, a, a more transparent view of, like, how you're using, how staff are being utilized and being able to tell school to school what's going on. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just thinking that as long as there's that option to come back and say, I've never used my, like, as its variable, I've never used my campus-wide support that way. I'd like this, bring, reclaim that as...
Okay, then just a little more about the equity allocation, moving from five percent that was only based on SES this year. And as with all schools, it moves to four percent, still focused on socioeconomic status, and then an additional four percent, um, to support combined underserved numbers. And in the high schools, um, every student in a school, so, is weighted, um, in that school. So. Making up for a total of eight. And yes, across the whole system, um, we, we drew from the ratio FTE. So, um, ratio numbers did increase slightly across all levels in order to garner this FTE, to do this strategic investment.
Yeah, so this just reiterates the, the point that, uh, Sue Ann made, was we made a change by increasing the equity allocation. And this by itself doesn't impact the total FTE system-wide, um, to high schools. Um, but in order sort of offset that increase in the equity allocation, it was just pulled from the, the ratio FTE, which made the ratio FTE look less favorable.
So the end result is that, um, again, the similar number that we looked at earlier. So, current year, there are five hundred and twenty total FTE in high schools. Next year, um, even with a hundred and sixty-nine fewer students, um, uh, we're basically flat. So slightly positive, um, seven additional FTE, um, which I think a reasonable person calls flat. So, um, but, but again, intentionality around investments made to the high school and, um, holding them, um, as a group harmless relative to the loss of a hundred and sixty-nine, um, student full-time equivalents in the school, schools. So, um, so in summary, um, the high schools are receiving an increased amount of the general fund FTE, um, system-wide this year. The general fund FTE gains do not quite offset the expiration of other resources and, um, and the PPS budget overall, including the high school budget, allows, allows for a modest selection of targeted investments. Um, but it does not rebuild programs or fully protect schools from enrollment declines. And some of those are significant. And, and that's most notable in the high schools.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Staff is here to answer additional questions we have, but I think, um, I really think it's a discussion opportunity for us, um, to think about how we're prioritizing. I, I've heard some people comment, you know, do we dip into reserves in a stable year, um, to try to offset this even more? And so I'd be curious for my colleagues to hear what you're thinking about, um, or if this is the right direction. I remember that in our last district staffing, um, presentation right before the governor's, um, town hall, we had asked staff to come back with, making sure that we allocate additional resources, of course, in line with our equity policy. And I think, um, this is a piece of that. And so I, I'm interested in hearing our discussion.
I'll just, I have a few questions. I don't know. Um, one of them is just what's our, just back to the arts task, arts tax, and, um, what's our Plan B in case those revenues do not materialize, which I know I'm being a bit of a broken record about, but I'm really worried about it.
So when it comes to the arts tax, we are working, we continue to work with the city of Portland. Um, the, our information from them is that when it comes to revenue collections, they believe that they're on track to collect sufficient revenue. Um, there are a couple of lawsuits out there which they are actively working on. And at this point, uh, we continue to work with them to make sure we understand what the situation is. The city is completely aware that we are staffing schools right now because we have to. Um, and we're staffing schools at that five hundred to one ratio.
But what's the Plan B? I mean, we're hiring now, and then what if, what do we, I mean, we talked about not wanting to pull out, uh, staff from schools in the fall, but that's what we would have to do? Or I don't, this is sort of unprecedented where we have this.
So we're very clear with the city what we're doing. And we understand that they're collecting the, the revenue.
Okay, because this was their, their thing, so, okay.
That is, that, that's very, that is also very clear in our conversations that this was their thing. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's where we hope that the city has some reserves, right, to actually kind of put in what?
Fulfill their, yeah. Yeah. Um, and then my next question was just around the, um, the ten FTE, understanding that you'd wanna have that flexibility for things being different in the fall, but that we also have some pretty severe impacts right now. So just wanted to get some understanding of where we are in terms of the timing on releasing those to, since people are making choices right now about what they're gonna, where they're gonna send their kids.
Right. And, um, uh, related to all of the set-aside FTE, not just the ten for high schools, um, we are, so the regional administrators are working with principals and analyzing, um, their, um, staffing recommendations, their schedules, and determining, um, if there are challenges or places, um, which of those, um, uh, we can be strategic about and support in other ways, which of them are FTE-dependent. And so we will look at, are there, are there other urgent needs? I mean, we do have a small part of the set-aside that's for actual, you know, mistakes, um, in the formula. So sometimes the way of formula. So we had one school, for instance, where, um, the school was three or four students off, um, uh, having an, uh, assistant principal. And it's a school that has had an assistant principal. So we would look at a situation like that and say, it was an unintended impact of a formula that's based on an assistant principal, um, being in a K-eight when they had four hundred or more students and so forth. So, um, so we're looking at all of those kinds of, uh, concerns, uh, with the principals at this time. And then, um, I will be reviewing at the end of the week with the regional administrators, um, which of those we feel should be abated at this time, and what the risks of using those FTE now are versus, um, we, we know that there are, um, at least two considerable housing developments that will be opening in our school boundaries over the course of the fall. We wanna, um, make certain that we're, you know, conscious of the impacts of those, even though we can't fully predict how many kids will go to which schools. But we do know that we'll need to have some set-aside for those. Some of those may show up for September, some may show up for January. So there are a number of pieces where we're trying to, um, both put as much into the schools as we can right now because, because we want them to keep the staff and programs that they have now, and to also be good stewards of the FTE so that we don't find ourselves in, um, August, September, October, uh, you know, wringing our hands saying, wow, if only we had another, so many FTE, so.
There's one more quick question and others wanna, I'm trying to answer late. But one real basic thing for me that I'm, uh, I'm hearing different numbers from principals and parents versus the numbers that we were given. So can you explain some of those discrepancies or what's, the dynamic is there? And how do we, um, understand what's really, what the impact really is? And I know it's incredibly complex and there's so many different pots of funding and different things. But I, it's hard for me to know how to respond when I'm hearing one number of cut that's much more dire in some instances than... So is it just that things are still in motion or are principals interpreting it differently?
Well, while they think about answering, I did notice in the materials we got, um, when I looked at the special education, um, funding.
Or I'm just reading it wrong. That's the big one that could be.
No, it's, um, it was the special education funding that we didn't get the associated FTE cut reduction.
Okay.
So if, if we add up all the information in our documents, I mean, that's one way. It made sense. There may be others.
Okay, that's helpful.
The special ed and ELL.
I think there's two things.
Okay.
One is, um, general fund staffing, and then general fund staffing plus special ed plus ELL.
Okay, great.
And then the other one that sometimes happens is, as you've heard earlier, the staffing that some, that schools enjoy this year is based on their forecast for this year, not the actual number of students. The forecast for next year relates to the difference between what we expect for next year and the actual number of students that they have. And so sometimes that, that differential is larger and people perhaps lose sight of the fact that the level of staffing that they're enjoying this year is larger than they would have based on the number of students. So that, that change appears more dramatic because of how it is relative to how they're staffed this year. And that doesn't always translate for folks.
Okay.
Was that the case at Wilson in particular?
That, that is part of the situation at Wilson, yes.
That was my question.
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
So I, um, I don't, I don't, I don't think I have a question unless you have a magic wand where you can provide us with some more funding. Um, but I will say that I, I, I just have to express my concern about high schools and the high school schedule. I've been in multiple now meetings with parents and principals. Um, and again, I think I've mentioned this at other meetings, but again, I'm hearing about high school schedules with large holes in the middle of the day, and fourteen-year-old students who have two hours and don't know what to do with themselves for those two hours. Um, it, it's a concern to me. You know, the, the students are going off-campus, they're going into the parks, they're going to somebody's house for a couple of hours. Um, I mean, part of it is parent responsibility to make sure your student knows the, what they should and shouldn't be doing. But at the same time, our obligation as a school district is to make sure that we're, those children are in our care and that we're making sure that they're safe. Uh, and I don't think they're safe when they have a two-hour, uh, blank spot in the middle of their day because they haven't got a class. Or because they have a study hall that doesn't have a monitor or has a monitor that's, the class is so big they're not able to follow them or, you know, they're, they're, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about this, uh, this problem with our high school schedule. So I just think we have to do something about it. We have an obligation to these students and to our families.
Any response?
That was a statement, not a question.
I would say that's a question.
Well, it's a question. Go ahead, tell me how we're gonna fix it. Where, where, where can we adjust funding? What can we do? How can we support our high schools more?
Our high school students.
We put our children through these, you know, we're, we're so concerned about, um, making sure that, uh, in the younger grades that our children are getting everything that they need and they get to high school and all of a sudden we allow a fourteen-year-old. So I am asking about, you know, do you guys have some ideas for this? Or, I know it's a, you know, there isn't any.
So I'm gonna do a couple things, because some of this is a budget question and some of this is the current state of the arbitration decision question. And, um, and on the arbitration question, we are limited by, in the arbitration to students, it's a, it's a, it's a two-part decision, one of which limits, um, caps class size, and one of which limits the number of classes a student can take to seven, with the exception of our academic priority students and special education students. So that is, and we're in conversations about that separately from the budget process. Second one then is the resource question, which you are, um, like, which we're in right now. And so, like, we've got some ability to do, like, the ten, the ten FTE that we're talking about right now. Some of the conversation with, um, with, that we're in with the principals right now is, okay, what can you do with your schedule? What works? What doesn't? How do we get the threshold that we're able to give you the maximum capacity to schedule your students? And how much of that FTE do we release now? How much are we holding back? Um, it could be that part of your conversation ends up being about, are, like, is there some willingness to go into reserves to add any more to? Like, I think my presentation to you was trying to get to us to a, a balanced budget, which is what we did. I think you guys have some conversation of is there, are we willing to put in additional FTE? Um, and part of how we project and look at what, uh, scheduling is both, um, okay, looking at our seven-period day, but also what's the history of what classes, the number of classes students actually take. And there's some, um, this is part of the conversation with principals right now, is trying to really gauge, okay, what do students actually sign up for? What's been artificially generated by our limitation? And so where do you have you encourage kids to take less? What would they naturally take? But the pattern is less than every, every student actually taking seven classes. So some of it is trying to gauge what's the right, like, how do we actually budget for you to staff appropriately? And how are we, if we say we're gonna staff every high school so that every single student can take seven classes, they don't. So there's some, and it varies campus to campus. So that's some of the complexity of the conversations with Trip and the high school principals, is trying to gauge how do we fully offer kids exactly, you know, what it is they wanna take so they have as full a schedule as possible.
Students have been doing that for years. And my, 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 my sons didn't take a full schedule in junior and senior year. And that's a choice. And in their cases, they were TAs for
Exactly.
teachers. But to have a fourteen-year-old.
We totally agree.
A freshman in those situations, or even sophomores, um...
Not okay.
No, it's not okay.
So here's what I'll tell you, like, we're looking back at multi, you know, multiple years of data. So before the schedule change, looking at patterns, trying to get, like, school to school, it's a little different school to school, so it's not even the same pattern that you can do a formula. It's really trying to gauge, okay, how do we appropriately staff a school that the kids in that school are able to, to maximize what they take, you know, what classes are available for them? And how do we appropriately have that conversation about how we give you the FTE you need at the moment we need it? And...
Students can take seven, but they can't take seven. They can only take six, plus a study hall. It, I mean, there's just, there are just not enough classes right now. At least that's what I'm hearing from parents and I'm hearing from principals as well.
But yeah, and this is exactly the conversation we're in. And we're trying to get as accurate a picture as we can. And some of this is resource. Even if we get the seven, um, the arbitration of, cap on seven classes lifted, we still have a budgetary, um, limiter on, like, what we're able to offer.
It's still only a hundred and eighty students for each teacher.
For each teacher.
That means you have to add more staff.
Well, exactly.
But how do we do that?
Well, that's what I'm saying to you. Like, some of this is still a budget issue and we are not in a reinvestment budget. Like, this is the thing where I feel like there's some, um, feeling that, like, we are exactly where we are in terms of what resource we have to work with. And we may have, we have the room to move that you're, that you're aware of.
Carol, I under, I understand that. And I'm not asking for reinvestment. I, I would, I think that we, I think that last year, um, circumstances, we ended up in the, in the circumstances we're in now. And we're feeling it again this year. My goal would be to rectify the problem from last year, not, not a big reinvestment, just rectify the problem that we have. Um, we're working on other problems in this district. I think this is a problem too.
And, and I, I would just...
As do we. We, I mean, this is what we believe we're working on. As do we. I mean, this is what we believe we're working on though. And, and I do believe there is a, we're making really transparent, here's what we, you know, here's how we're piecing together what we have this year. Here's exactly the place we are. And if in fact we want to try and put more staff in, like, you can see every ounce of how we've used resource and where we've pulled it from operations departments in order to put it in, to, I mean, we've done a, a bunch of what we have.
It's a great transparent budget. It really is.
It's very transparent.
It's the most transparent that I've, since I've been on the board, but that's not helping.
And, but, but I'm gonna say, and we have held reserves at, at exactly steady with where they are right now and we could have more room to move there if in fact the board wanted to take us there. So, there is something else in front of you as a discussion that could be available to us.
So, can I jump in here? Can I just ask a couple of questions? One is, okay, how many FTE would it be if all of our kids were taking seven classes?
Yeah, that's a big question.
Because staff has told us that students are taking about six classes. They're taking a little bit, you know, point something more than they used to take, but that was when they had a seven-period day, not a six-period day. So, if we got kids to a seven-period day, which we would be allowed to do, what would that take us in terms of FTE?
So, our most recent analysis, it would, it would take us twenty-six point five FTE or something like that.
And how much is that?
And I, and I should reiterate, this is our most recent analysis and we're still looking, you know, at, at some of, you know, there might be some variation. So, if next week is twenty-five, there might be, so I don't, you know, hold, like, lock in on twenty-six point five, but that's what our number is showing right now.
So, with or without the ten?
Sorry?
Oh, that's.
Yeah, that would be twenty, that would be about.
So, sixteen or twenty-six?
Twenty-six, which is two point six million dollars.
So, it's twenty, I'm sorry. So, it's twenty-six on top of the ten you're holding out?
I don't think it's sixteen. I think it's sixteen.
Or is it sixteen?
Or is it sixteen?
I think it's sixteen.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's sixteen.
On top of the ten.
Yeah, so on top of the ten.
On top of the ten.
Okay.
Thank you.
One point six million.
So, I'm roughly doing the math for it.
So, the forty-eight FTE, does that include, that you're holding back, does that include the ten?
Yes.
Yes. The ten is part of that. So, the forty-eight.
So, there's an assumption that thirty-eight would go into K eights?
It's got, so some of it is kindergarten FTE so that we're able to gauge if we end up with kindergarten enrollment that's higher. Some of it is core program in the middle grades for K eights when they're too small. How do we shore up core program? I mean, they each have, we have designations.
And some of its enrollment. So, approximately half of that is intended for enrollment and half of the enrollment, enrollment is for kindergarten. But there's some, there's some available for enrollment differences in grades one through twelve as well.
So, I have a second, a second question, which is, if we had our students in seven periods and then we only had one period where they were in study hall, what are we doing to staff study halls and, for their models where that is a productive time? Because study hall could be valuable time. Mandatory study hall could be a good thing for students to get their work done. And there are places where those, my son's in the Navy. When he's in school, there, he has mandatory study hall. He goes and he does his work. So, if we had study hall that was actually something where students were getting work done and they were supervised, that, that wouldn't be such a bad thing because an eight-period, an eight-course load could, a lot of kids wouldn't really want a heavy academic classes.
No.
But the, the time has to be valuable and it has to be not that they're going to somebody's house and hanging out or not that they're in the park or, you know, doing all sorts of things they shouldn't be doing or they're wasting their time when they ought to be working. So, what, what, what's happening in the study halls and what could we do to staff them in a way that would make them meaningful?
I know last year what we ended up doing was we did not support the quote "study hall" position. And so, it was a campus monitor. Oftentimes, it was taking that position. And so, this year, that's been restored into the school-wide table. So, the conversation is really about who, who is the appropriate person to staff a study hall. That's a part of it.
Right.
I know that, again, the, you know, the, the question for me is more around how many kids are in a study hall, you know, if the adults in there is that person that, for example, could rotate through that has a background in math, for example, English. There's conversations about how we could use more of a qualified person, if you will, in that position. So, right now, the way the school-wide table, we have enough for two campus monitors in each building along with a study hall person. So, it's different.
But is that really enough? Is one study, one study hall person means you've got one person per period?
No, I mean, I'd love to have, I'd love to have a model where it's much more of a, a dedicated tutor-type person, if you will.
Right.
In a study hall. That's currently not what we have in place.
Along, along those lines, I mean, one of the questions that I raised last year was, we, we do a number of contracts with, with community organizations, particularly around tutoring and whether we actually explore the possibility of bringing them in, you know, rather, during the, the school time day rather than after school in which many of those programs get done, whether that might be something to explore.
I think it may be some contract issues.
I understand that, but, but again, we do have a contract with this, with these providers and, and there is, you know, a potential captive audience. And, you know, if we're looking at leveraging those resources, then we've gotta explore it.
So, I heard you both mentioned contracts and I think you were talking about different contracts.
No, 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 I definitely, I know, I know what contract he's referring to.
Teacher contract, right.
But if, but if the idea is that all the adults are interested in regards to improving the academic achievement, how would they get on the way in regards to opposing that, by the way, if it's gonna be supplemental to the, to the, to the work that there needs to be done? So, I mean, I think that's a question. I mean, if we're, if we're looking at creative ways and working with limited resources, then we have to, I think, explore every opportunity that we can get.
Yeah, I know that some of our high schools right now have peer tutoring programs during study hall where students are tutoring students. And so, there's a lot of creative things that are happening. I'd love to look at stronger partnerships with our university system.
I mean, it'd be a logical place to put, work study students.
Absolutely.
You know, college students who need that kind of experience.
Aspiring teachers.
So, what kind of partnerships could we have to, to make that time valuable to students?
Yep, absolutely.
This is also one of the places that we're leveraging the online learning teacher FTE. So, a number of students who are doing credit recovery through our online or blended learning programs are doing them during these periods in their schedule. So, it's as though they've added a class and so, but as a, as a career high school teacher and a former high school principal, I would share with you, this is one of my places of enormous heartburn as well. And side by side with it is the fact that we have a number of very small K eight programs that are struggling to meet the core program. So, we are just, we are, we are thin. And I, I absolutely am working both with the regional administrators and the principals to understand and figure out how do we mitigate this in the shortest term? So, how do we get all of those college students in the metro area who need service learning opportunities and who are interested? So, how do we multiply programs like the partnership we have with Concordia University, with Lewis and Clark and others? So, so we do have more ways to enrich that time and have kids in a focused and supported space. And, and it is thin. And I don't, I don't, you know, I, so, I, I really hear you and we have looked closely at this. And this is part of where we dug back and said, okay, we need another nine FTE in the high schools. And it's a closed system and there's no place to take from right now that doesn't leave somebody short. And that is the, and that is this budget. So.
So, my heartburn is exactly the same discussion that we have a sixty-two percent graduation rate and yet we have our high school kids with one or two monstrous holes in their schedule every day. Or almost every day. And it seems that it would certainly be my highest priority for us to fill that with actual classroom teachers. So, students benefit from that rather than coordinator-type positions. So, when I look at our budget and trying to figure it out, I look at that forty-eight FTE, I question why only ten would go to high schools when we've taken forty-six adults out of high schools in the last, you know, in that one budget cycle? So, why wouldn't we prioritize high schools perhaps even more? That would be one place that we could look. When you look at the budget, we're talking about doing some textbook adoptions and expansions, which I think is about a million dollars. I would question whether or not we could delay that for a year and think about adding more teachers back. Again, if we expect that the economy's going to recover, one of the things we might want to do is just delay some of the other investments for a year and get our kids a full school schedule, full class schedule. I would look at the CTE positions and the online positions and make sure that those truly are teachers teaching kids, not coordinator kinds of positions. And I would be open, again, if, our assumption is that the economy is coming back, I would be open to looking at going into reserves to try to fill this void some way, somehow. I don't know how with a sixty-two percent graduation rate, we can in any clear conscious accept a budget that allows our high school kids to have one or two study halls a day. It, it makes no sense to me. So, I would feel very strongly that I'd like us to dig deep and figure out where else in the budget we can look. And, you know, one of the questions we, you know, what is our FTE? What teachers do we have on staff that aren't in the classroom teaching? And are we looking at that? And how can, how can we move them into the classroom? And so, I actually, I mean, one of the things that's a little frustrating to me, as you all know, is that we don't have a budget committee. And so, a lot of these questions that we're asking now are questions that we would normally ask in a pretty intensive budget kind of setting. So, I know I've come up with, you know, probably thirty questions that I'd like to get answers to and get written answers to. So, I'm gonna be getting those to you in the next day or two, I think. And a lot of them are right around this high school question. The other thing that I want to talk about is I'm, I'm worried that we're not giving our community the opportunity to talk to us enough about this budget. We had six people who could testify today. I know there were others who wanted to, but we offered six opportunities tonight. I don't think we are offering any opportunity for the public to come and talk to us. So, we have two budget hearings. And, you know, my assumption when we went through this is that in each of these work sessions, we would get some public comment. So, I guess I'm asking board leadership to look at whether or not we're providing enough opportunity for our parents and students and teachers and others to come and talk to us about what we're doing so we get it right. So, I'm asking for that question too.
So, on the, on the reserve issue that you mentioned, I'd like to know from staff what kind of advice we've gotten about the risk of the arts tax being overturned. I'd just like to know what, you know, have we gotten legal advice? Have the city gotten legal advice? Have they shared that with us? What do we think the odds are?
So, we're in process on that and our council is going to be talking to the city council, but the, the city's council with an E L. Those conversations have not taken place yet. I think when it comes to reserves, Coach Ebelisle made the observation at the start of this, that the superintendent has based the budget on an assumption of six point five-five billion as an appropriation and two hundred million dollars from Per's savings. Neither of those are a done deal yet. And so, as your budget director, I've got some concern about using reserves until we are more locked in on knowing that those are the numbers that actually do come through. Because if they don't, then we've got some, you know, we've got some challenges ahead of us.
There are some other things floating around in the legislature as well that could provide some funds if the urban renewal measure passed. I don't know whether the compression discussion would provide funds immediately or if that's a longer term.
The compression discussion would not provide funds in the thirteen-fourteen year. It would be fourteen-fifteen at the earliest. Urban renewal, not clear. Yeah, because the compression thing would need to go to a statewide vote and then we would have to renew the local option. So, that, that.
But the urban renewal?
Urban renewal, not quite sure whether that would produce money for next year or not at this point, but we'll find out for you.
Okay, I'd like, I'd be interested in that.
So, I think, you know, that's.
So, that I, I would like to hear more on those two topics.
Sure.
Because if we're talking about reserves and our reserves are quite limited, I want to know what are the, what are the risk factors that we're looking at before we talk about taking the reserves on a.
Yeah. I'll, I'll get an update on time, possible timing on urban renewal. Just two of the things that Director Regan asked about, the online blended learning, those three FTE are categorically teachers. They're highly qualified teachers. They will be working with students directly on credit recovery, which is, we're talking about graduation rate. Credit recovery is really tightly aligned with improving graduation rate. The textbook adoption is a million dollars, but it's two hundred thousand dollars in the thirteen-fourteen budget and eight hundred thousand dollars in the fourteen-fifteen budget. So, it is two hundred thousand dollars, which is not nothing, but it's not a huge amount of money in the context.
Although added to that, as we've also heard from the state, yeah, is that, go for it.
I was, yeah, we have heard from the state that they are possibly delaying the adoption, some of their adoption decisions about the English language arts materials. So, it's possible that we may be looking at delaying that, but we, we need to confirm that with ODE because I, we got preliminary message, but we need to confirm what that actually means. But it's two hundred thousand in the budget.
Just to clarify that piece, I mean, it's really a five-million-dollar adoption and we pulled back knowing that we didn't want to do a full adoption because we're trying to push folks into it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
So, we're doing a K two or K three part of the adoption.
We prioritized K three and we prioritized English language development. So, there would be materials for first four grades and for English language learners. But we will be trying to get an update very quickly on what that information we got from ODE means for timing.
Other thoughts, comments, questions?
Actually, I don't need an answer to this right now, but I would like, and you're talking about online learning. We got a letter from a teacher, very detailed discussion about materials for online learning. And I assume that you got it as well. So, I'd be interested in, maybe we should connect about that. I'd be interested in your response to the concerns that were raised in terms of what we're investing in and whether it's the, whether it's the right thing.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we want to do the full five percent to eight percent reallocation of FTE for, or based on race, just because I think we heard from like the Lincoln cluster tonight that like we're looking at taking a lot of hits. And I think that in a lot of cases, like, it sounds really great and like we do need to improve the achievement gap, but I'm not sure if just like throwing more staff at their school is gonna help when I see a lot of it being like social issues of students not even coming to school that almost need to be taken on first. But either way, just looking at like the impacts at schools at like Lincoln, because I think our teacher-to-student ratio is gonna go up to like two hundred students to one teacher, which wouldn't even be allowed with our contract.
So, that's probably a good indication that that's not gonna happen at Lincoln because it's not allowed.
Then we have to find money from like the foundation and stuff.
But every high school is going to get, and I think it was important to, the clarification following on the hearing the other night where a question was raised, well, why are you doing, you're doing this on percentage and so you're not meeting the needs of students of color if there's a smaller population in that school? And, and that, so, the clarification that we heard since and we've heard tonight is that it are actually, it is based on absolute numbers of students so that every, so there's student population in every high school is, is, is gonna get an impact. But, I mean, when you say throwing it, I mean, maybe you could talk more about how exactly, how directive or what you anticipate or expect those additional equity FTE would be used for, how they would be used?
So, the.
Because I think you're calling the question and I appreciate it.
The equity allocation FTE is intended to be part of the general FTE. And so, it's not directed as a separate category. And so, it is intended to resource, so, as an additional resource that then impacts class size or a principal's ability to determine, you know, that this is a, we want. that then impacts class size or a principal's ability to determine, you know, that this is a, we want a Q M H P or we, a qualified mental health professional or we want a school management specialist or a reading specialist or so forth. So, so the intention there is to provide a resource um, so that in consultation with the regional administrator, a principal is determining how best to support their school to target the achievement gap. And, and in many cases, the, the, the amount is quite small and so, um, that's part of why we didn't direct the resource because there's no-
Well, it's a low of one and a half or two FTE on up, looks like roughly, if you combine.
No, it's actually quite a bit smaller than that. It's in, in, um-
Or is it, am I reading this wrong again? This is just about-
Are you thinking about the focus and priority schools? Those are, do have requirements.
Reading your charts clearly.
No, you're, you're looking at the total allocation.
Well, the high schools is pretty significant.
You're looking at these numbers.
Right. I'm looking at highs, I'm just looking in terms of the high school piece. Because I think that's-
Right. So the, so the allocation to the high schools, because the numbers are larger, are larger. But across the whole system.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I was just thinking in terms of the high schools because you brought up Lincoln. Because there is a, you know, there, there isn't the floor at the other levels, right? Or we have these cutoffs where you have, as you mentioned, there are some schools that are very close but aren't quite there and they get nothing. But at least at the high schools, that's one area where we are making sure that every high school gets additional resources, just how we're allocating it.
So we, we're not reallocating base, doing this in the elementary middle schools, specific to high schools?
No, we are.
Okay.
It's just we are.
At the elementary or elementary schools, there are floors, so you have to be at thirty percent or forty-five percent before you even get access to this. In the high schools, we just said you're gonna automatically get it. Thank you. With that, thank you very much. I know it was very helpful in our understanding of how this was all pieced together. It sounds like we'll have some additional discussions about reserves or how we might try to mitigate that.
Can you just, or maybe that's on your review, just in terms of our process, where we are and how many, how much more opportunity, because I know this was, um, one chunk of time at the end of a long meeting and there's the issue of, it's like how and when we get to the different issues that we may not have time to discuss in a study session and through F A Q issue and so forth.
So we have three more board meetings outside about an hour apiece. Um, just like tonight, we can go over that depending on how. Um, we talked actually in leadership about how do we set this at the front end of our meetings so that we have our best thinking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then we're challenged by having our wonderful cluster folks here and wanna also respect their time. So, um, we are trying to balance that. So we have three more discussions and then additional, the May first public hearing.
But what are the opportunities for the public to weigh in? Is it just that one?
And then public comment, yes.
But are we gonna continue to limit public comment through this budget cycle or are we gonna open that up a little bit more?
Again, we can, we can have that discussion. I hear you have an interest in that.
Okay.
Um, we could also add additional public hearings if that's something we're interested in.
I just want to make sure that our community has a chance to weigh in.
Absolutely. And, I was just gonna say, to that, to that point, I mean, it's, it's interesting. Tonight, we focused on high schools, but we have schools, um, last night or a couple nights ago when we were at, um, Wilson High School, we heard Maplewood and we heard school after school after school come and say, you can't cut another one FTE, you can't cut another point five FTE. And, and so it is, it is a balancing. I mean, I appreciate Ms. Singer's point of, there's this tension of how do we hold steady with a significant federal or expiring grants? Um, and I think that as we think about it this year, I'd like to recommend we think, because we have grants expiring every year, um, and how, how do we message or how do we get ahead of that and plan for it? So.
I think at some point, we also need to go back and look at whether we need to close some of our smaller schools, whether they're smaller high schools or smaller K five, K eights. I mean, we need to figure out how we're gonna manage through these budget cycles. Because, you know, even if the economy turns around, we know that per's costs are gonna continue to go up and other costs are gonna continue to go up. And at some point, we need to really have a serious conversation about what we can actually support, um, within our district. Um, the other thing, and I don't know whether this makes sense or not, but it seems like the six of eight schedule has caused havoc in terms of our student schedules and do we need to have a discussion about whether that's the appropriate high school schedule? I mean, I think there's a lot of reasons why people like it, but in terms of our kids, I'm not seeing that it's necessarily benefited them. So those are two broader questions to look at at some point. Yeah, and, and we've got growth coming up through the lower grade, so we're not, we're not, we have overcrowding at a bunch of schools. I mean, this discussion coming up with Superintendent's Advisory Committee and enrollment and transfer and the balancing, I mean, we've already heard tonight just around, we have huge overcrowding and then we've got drops of enrollment just south, you know, so we, we've got an issue that's, I mean, yes, but, so. No, I know. It's not an easy.
I, I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm struck by a statement of, of Representative, uh, Student Representative Garcia in regards to the, the, the allocations in particular, but also the, the assumption, I think at least what I'm hearing, assumption here that, that, um, and perhaps of the intent, but that's the impact on me in regards to this, is that we shouldn't invest it that way because only the students from, from Lincoln, because they are the ones that are showing up at school and we're assuming that the other students that are struggling are not showing up at school. Uh, that's, you know, like, pretty deep in, in that sense. So I just want to make sure that at some point in the future, we actually address in regards to the discussions and we also look at the impact in regards to the growth of students, uh, achievement based on some of those investments that we're actually making right, you know, in the, in the schools. I just want to leave, you know, with that, because I keep, I keep hearing statements like that that people make and, and it's just like, hmm, um, they need to be checked on and reviewed.
No, and I think in response, like, in no way do I mean, like, we don't need to support those students. I'm just seeing, like, my little brother just transferred to Jefferson and what he's experiencing is more of like, there are kids that have like lost hope in school and a lot of it is as a result of like budget cuts year after year. And I think that, like, in a lot of ways, we need to take on the social issues of getting schools into, or getting students to come to school before adding additional staff and cutting from other schools. So, but like, like ideally, we'd want to be doing both, but in this situation, like, it's gonna be hurting other schools while investing somewhere else. So just ensuring that it's actually gonna benefit students is important before we make the change.
Again, I think that we need a deeper discussion of that, you know, at ten o'clock.
So with that, I will reconvene us magically and be back into the Board of Education for our study session. And I'll start to adjourn us in the sense that I just want to remind everybody that the Board, um, sitting as the Budget Committee, will hold another public hearing on the proposed twenty thirteen fourteen budget on Wednesday, May first, six P M, here in the Board Auditorium. Uh, our next regular meeting of the Board will be held next Monday, April twenty-ninth, at six P M, also here. We are adjourned.